Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this Region 12 Public District Budget Hearing, March 27, 2017. Is there a motion to name a moderator to read the notice of the meeting?
I nominate Hubblebank to be the moderator.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to have Mr. Hubblebank be the moderator. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Mr. Hubblebank, would you read the notice of the public budget hearing?
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given to all those entitled to vote in town meetings in the towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington that a public hearing will be held on Monday, March 27, 2017, at 7:00 PM in the library of the Chapag Valley School, 159 South Street, Washington, Connecticut, to present the annual budget for the year 2017-18, prepared by the Regional Board of Education for Chapag Valley Regional School District 12, copies of which are -- will be available at the public meeting, over there, I believe. Chapag Valley Regional School District 12, Bridgewater, Washington, Roxbury, by James Hurstfield, Chairman, Board of Education, Washington Depot, Connecticut.
Thank you, Mr. Hubblebank. All right, moving on to Item 3, Overview Presentations of the Budget Process and the 2017-18 Annual Budget for Regional School District 12. Dr. Cosentino.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just to give a little overview of the budget process, our process really goes year-round, but we officially start in November, when staff, administrators, program directors all get the paperwork from Mr. Geeson's office to start to work in their departments and schools to work on the budget for the following year. Discussions take place in December and January, when budgets are submitted to the office with the heads of the departments, the administrators, again, all of those people who actually submit budgets, and it's a meeting with Mr. Geeson, myself, and the person who's submitting the budget, and we talk about needs, we talk about staffing, we talk about supplies and facility issues, and also try to delineate the difference between wants and needs and possible reductions. In February, Mr. Geeson has put together the budget documents, first draft, and that's when we start to sit with the Board of Finance members from this committee, led by Mrs. Anderson, and at that point, town officials are invited, board members are invited, and we really go through line by line, answering questions. The committee always has great questions, does a deep dive into the different line items, and we always have a big discussion about staff and programming as we're going to move forward. Through those discussions, reviewing priorities, hard decisions are made, but always in the best interests of the students and the region. This year, the budget was 0 percent neutral. The big items were a reduction of four certified staff and two non-certified staff. Basically, due to a decrease in students, this year, we have lost 29 students in grades K to 5. We did add Project Lead the Way and Makerspace for K-5 schools. I'm very proud of our budget. It's been a lot of collaborative work. The budget remains neutral, it is fiscally responsible, and it doesn't reduce programs. I do want to just add a couple of little things. Since our last meeting, had to have a conversation with staff and Mrs. Gora to talk about the music position, and although we're able, with a lot of creative scheduling, to provide a program that is robust to our kids, it is going to stretch the staff, and so she recommended to me that we possibly put a .4 music position back, and I do support that if the board wants to entertain that. As far as the scoreboard came up last week, scoreboard came up, and we did get a quote, "Mr. O'Leary is ill," but the quote was for $23,500, and I do just want to let you know, after speaking to much of the staff, although it's a nice, and we'd like to have it, we didn't think that this was the year to put it in, because it wasn't part of the budget process, and everyone had already made substantial cuts. So that came up, and now, Mrs. Kalella will just give a brief overview.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Are you done?
I am done, I'm sorry.
Is there any questions for the superintendent from the board? All right, Mrs. Kalella will review Burnham's school update. Thank you.
Sure. So tonight, I was directed by the Board of Ed and Dr. Cosentino to present to you my thoughts, this was last week, of how Burnham could be structured with four educators for the 2017-2018 school year. As you know, this past December, Mrs. DeBrito and I, along with a consultant, presented our plan for a K-2 configuration. We are certainly excited about that implementation, and will continue to move forward with that. In light of the fact that our numbers have decreased, I understand the need to move forward with combining additional classes. It was our original intent to begin that transition slowly, as stated in our presentation on December 19. Although I know that a reduction in staff has been proposed, I will wait to hear further from the Board of Education to make a final decision on the specific configuration. However, I have a recommendation. Options, Burnham's school could have a 3-4 combination with one teacher, or a 3-5 combination with two teachers. My recommendation for the 2017-2018 school year would be to combine the grades 3 through 5 with two certified teachers and one highly qualified support staff member. In grades 3 through 5, the curriculum is demanding and much more difficult to blend, and in particular, such subjects as math, science, social studies need to be grade-specific. Having the small numbers and creating a program that is centered around individual learning goals is a vision my staff shares with me. Our goal is always to provide a quality education. I want to remind the board of some things that we talked about when we talked about the K-2 configuration, and the benefits of combining some of these classes. Students in multiple grade configurations have significantly more positive attitudes towards school, themselves, and others. Children are able to spend several years with the same teachers. Teachers can develop a deeper understanding of each child's strengths and needs, and are then in a better position to support their students' learning, provide more individualization and effective feedback. Children have almost an extra month of teaching time, because the teacher doesn't have to spend the early weeks of a new school year getting to know each child. Less review of prior instruction is needed. More students encourages collaborative learning, and students with students and students with teachers. Fosters positive peer relations, opportunities to help one another to serve, and perceived as positive role models. Classroom makeup changes from year to year, children get to try different roles, the younger student, the middle child, and the older child, providing many opportunities to develop leadership skills over time. The big thing that I think is really important about this combination, whereas having one teacher for 3-4 versus two teachers, two certified teachers, 3 through 5, is that team teaching. That is what's critical in multi-age configuration. So team teaching enhances the benefits of multi-grade classrooms. To have a teacher in isolation to carry the load of two grade levels is a concern for me. Teachers share the workload of planning lessons and units of study for three grades. This multi-age configuration also affords each child greater opportunities for success through whole-school, small-group, and individual learning plans. Team teaching allows for flexibility of teaching state standards to a single grade as needed. Again, there are many subject areas that we have to do grade-specific. Our expectation is that the child will get the grade-level curriculum, but also have the opportunity to have that collaborative opportunity. So for future steps, once the budget process is completed, the configuration will be finalized. Teacher assignments will be determined by the beginning of May. I already have two teachers who are very much interested in teaming together, and I know that they would make a great team, so I do have that in mind. Site visits, we've already begun some of those site visits, because as we said in December, we were beginning that process only on a slower pace. So we have sent at least third grade and fourth grade teachers out to visit, but we'll continue those site visits to Lee H. Kellogg's School in Falls Village, Warren School in Warren, Washington Montessori, that was recommended to us by the First Selectmen of Bridgewater, and it was a great opportunity, and we're going to return there, too. And as I said, these have already begun. We'll also be visiting Cornwell Consolidated in, I think it's Region 1. Presently, they have a K-2 configuration, so I know my K-2 teachers are really much interested in visiting and taking a look at what they're doing, and we also want to explore their future plans as well. Release time, we'll provide release time to work on curriculum, which is huge, of the grade-level configuration and classroom organization, and this will take place after the Smarter Balance Assessment. So they'll be doing that in May and June. Summer curriculum work will take place July and August, and work with the consultant, if needed, during the 2017-28 school year. I think we gained a lot, a lot of knowledge from our consultant, so there may be some specific questions that we might want to ask the consultant. I think once the K-2 really gets rolling, and we start working on that other configuration, we'll be in a great place. So my recommendation is to move forward with a 3 through 5. I don't want people to think that we don't have grades K through 5, we do. They just happen to look a little differently, and they will get the curriculum that is due to them. Any questions?
Valerie? Thank you, Ms. Call.
Sure.
Thank you, Kathy. I just wanted to make clear to the board, and perhaps some people that were here last Monday, that you did present to us at the Finance Committee Budget Workshops this configuration, and we talked about other configurations, and then last week, we were talking more about one than the other, but I always said it was up to you, the building administrator, because you know the kids. So I'm very, very happy that you've come to this conclusion. It seems like a really good plan, well-thought-out for the kids, and thank you.
I think with the numbers, and you know, I certainly, and I would say this to my, you know, the parents, that we'll continue to monitor the numbers, but with our numbers between 17 and 20 students, I think it's a good fit right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alan?
What, aside from being asked to cut a teacher, what changed between December, when you said you wanted to have more time to work on this process informally? I remember, well, I went back and looked at the meeting, and Ms. Gora asked Ms. DeBrito, "What about 3-4?" And her response was, "We need more time to have informal attempts and studies and workings," I'm assuming, not only for the easy part, but also for the more difficult grade-level subjects that you referred to, math, science, and social studies, on an informal basis, and then, I guess, during next year. And inasmuch as also looking at that meeting last year, I noticed that, you know, you had schedule plans, you had plans for cutting a hole in between rooms.
I do.
Yeah, I know, but that was all a lot of planning that went into effect before your meeting in December. So now that we're at almost April, and we have April, May, and June, those are three months that you can plan this with your teachers, but they take the summer off, except for the fact that it's become more expedient. I mean, do you really feel comfortable that what you wanted a year to do in December, you can do now in three months partly, and five months maybe? Is there a danger here that we need to have a different configuration as you work into this?
The only other configuration that I would imagine would be 3-4, and again, I don't feel like there's enough staffing there to accomplish that.
No, I meant that if we didn't, if the board didn't vote to remove that teacher, that your configuration, as it stands now, that you were expecting in December to have a teacher for each grade, and to have the process of learning how to merge the grades be a less rambunctious one for you in the spring.
I think a couple of things happened. What?
Not to put you on the floor.
Yeah, you are. I think a couple of things happened. You're right, we did say in December, and I went back and looked at that board meeting several times, because we were pretty clear about the fact that we were moving forward with our thoughts of a multi-grade configuration, but we wanted to make sure that the K through 2 program was really strong and powerful. You know, I envisioned that Burnham's school will become a showcase, and that's what I want it to be, so that it brings more folks to the area, and gives people an opportunity to see education a little differently, and maybe in a collaborative way. We did lose a few families, so did bring our numbers down a bit, so perhaps, looking, Dr. Cosentino, looking at the staffing and looking at the numbers, move to make a decision like that. So philosophically, I think some of the things that we learned through all of our work, K through 2, holds true to the upper levels. It's the work of the curriculum that we're going to have to spend a lot of time on. But again, if I had a 3 through 5 configuration, I have two certified staff members that can do that versus one that has to do two grades.
Michael?
But I thought this was a public hearing.
It will.
I thought this was a chance for the public to respond to the budget.
It's the next item on the agenda, Jay. I'm just trying to.
Again, it's a public hearing, not a board meeting, so I think you're having a board meeting now. If that's what's on your board for your next meeting, for the board to discuss whatever this is.
Well, I'm going to give one more chance. Michael?
Thank you. I just had a number of questions for you about your plan for the 3-5 class, and you started with kind of walking us through how you would do that teacher training, and again, obviously not an ideal situation. The ideal situation would be that that teacher training would have begun probably in September, continued through this school year, maybe finishing up over the summer, but apparently, that's the way we need to do it right now, the reality on the ground. So one of the questions I had for you is that you mentioned a number of different possible site visits for the teachers to go to, Falls Village, Washington Montessori, Cornwall. I'm wondering, do any of those schools actually have a 3-5 configuration?
Yes, most of the schools that we visited either have two teachers, or the schools have, they have reading specialists and math specialists, so there's always someone in to assist in the instruction and with planning. So some of those schools are K-8 schools, so the personnel is there, and I think that's what's important to know, is the resources are there to support any kind of configuration that you want to do.
Okay, so at least one or two of those schools have the kind of configuration that you have in mind that you'd like to move to in Burnham?
They may not have 3 through 5, they may have a 3-4, but there's also other adults in there that support it.
Okay.
But again, with my numbers of 17 to 20 students, I'm just looking at having those two adults take on that task.
I know you worked successfully with a consultant.
Right.
On the K-1-2 configuration.
Mm-hmm.
For a number of years now, correct?
No, this particular consultant came to us last summer.
Okay, so for about a year.
So this school year, we worked with her.
Okay. Would you envision continuing to work with her? Because I know you mentioned possibly a consultant available next school year, if there were any questions or problems that you could turn to. The same consultant? Were you thinking of bringing in a different consultant?
I don't know the answer to that right now. I was given a week to kind of get my thoughts together. I was referring to her initially, so perhaps she might be helpful. If there's someone else, I'm sure Teresa DeBrito and I will be looking to see if we can find other folks, too.
I think that.
We were very happy with that consultant.
I know you were, and you mentioned that in the presentation word. So obviously, whether she has that expertise or someone else of that caliber, I think that's crucial, particularly with the short time that you're being given, to bring the teachers up to speed as much as possible. Having team taught myself, it's not something you learn in a one-hour professional development session. It's a philosophy, and it's quite a bit of work, and you're fortunate that you have two qualified teachers that you feel.
I do, and I, you know, I should mention, it's so important to get two folks who can work together. I'm fortunate to have, with the K-2 configuration, two people who really want to work together, and that their teaching styles really mesh, and I'm really thrilled to say that I have two that have come forward that I think are going to work very well together.
I also wanted to follow up with you on the idea of collaboration and collaborative work. Dr. Cosentino started the meeting by talking about how much collaborative work was done to prepare the budget. Unfortunately, it seems that that collaboration was done internally, and I'm wondering what your thoughts are to bring that to all the stakeholders. In other words, it sounds like you have a plan in place for bringing teachers up to speed as quickly as possible. What is your plan to bring parents into that mix? Because they are vital processes, you're part of the educational process.
I agree. Teresa DeBrito and I worked really hard in being, providing clarity to parents and listening to them, and I think we've come a really long way with the folks at Burnham, and I'll probably follow the same process. I started the conversation at our last PTO meeting, and will continue, probably provide a presentation for them. I certainly want to hear their concerns, and I want them in every step of the way.
So you envision some open forums, sessions with parents over the next few months?
Yes, I do, yes.
Okay, great. Last question, I promise. The presentation that you gave to us back in December about the K-2 configuration seemed glowing, and that things from your perspective were really positive, as far as buying in both yourself as a building principal, and teachers and parents, buying into what's happening there. Am I correct in kind of my summary?
You're correct.
Okay, great. At the last board meeting, I was asking about the possibility of extending this idea, this concept, which educationally you feel is sound, to perhaps Booth. If you look at K and 1, there's a possibility of merging them. I'm not sure what, I mean, whether budgetarily, we need to consider only one teacher working with those, or keeping two, but as far as curriculum is concerned, we can certainly work at another site, if we feel that there are some benefits to students, particularly if we're looking at equity and the idea that those students eventually will hopefully end up here at Chapag, that they would have similar educational experiences. And I'm wondering if there's a possibility to have some of the Booth teachers, and the K and 1 grades in particular, working with some of the Burnham teachers in terms of training and getting up to speed on what that looks like in the classroom.
Personally, I think it's a great idea, but I would really want to make sure that Burnham is running really well before we continue down that road, and that's just a personal feeling. I think if we do it well, and we do it right, and it becomes a showcase, then other teachers may choose to try the same kind of configuration or combining classes. I would hope that we wait at least another year before, but it's certainly up to the board, board decides to do it in another building, because it does take a lot of work. And finding that right combination of folks is really important.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so Item 5 is, we'll move on to the public comment. Questions or statements concerning the budget to be entertained. So if anybody would like to address the board, ask questions, raise your hand, come up to the lectern, just state your name and where you're from. Anyone? Jay?
My name is Jay Hubblebank, I'm from Washington. I'm here tonight representing the town, Washington Board of Selectmen, who voted at our last meeting to support the board's proposed 2017-18 budget, as well as those staffing recommendations that were made. We want to thank the board for their hard work, and we understand the difficulty in providing a high-quality education for all students while trying to balance the costs. Given the continued decrease in the school population, especially at the elementary level, we think a flat budget for 2017-18 is appropriate, and while we sympathize with our Roxbury counterparts, we are thankful that the shift in the population for next year will help, actually, our budget will go down. This year, I believe, it went up almost $400,000 because of the shift in population for Washington, so we appreciate that, needless to say. We also want to acknowledge the difficulties of maintaining three small elementary schools while continuing, again, to provide a quality education. We believe the board has found an appropriate staffing level for maintaining high standards and keeping costs down, and in our opinion, it would be educationally and fiscally irresponsible to maintain a teacher for each grade in Burnham's school, given the projected class-size numbers, and I've heard the discussion tonight about your proposal, and we agree with that. We know quality teachers can provide quality instruction to students with diverse needs, and we believe you can do that, and teachers have done that all the time. And we also agree with the staffing reduction at Washington Primary School. It makes sense, given your numbers. And on a personal note, other than the board, I, as a former board member here and a school business manager for 20 years, I know how hard it is to put together a budget to both meet what the public and the staff want, as well as what the fiscal folks in your towns need. And I believe the administration and the board has done a great job to strike a balance between those two things, and I appreciate that. And given the anticipated state cuts in local funding this year, and while we don't get tons of money in our three towns, we do get some, and we're going to get less, I think this budget helps us be able to maintain our other services that the other folks in our towns look to and deserve. So again, I want to thank you for the hard work that you've done, and the Washington Board of Selectmen look forward to supporting your budget after you approve it later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I just have a couple of questions. As an alternative, what are the numbers if there were K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5 in each class? Is that a possibility? For Burnham?
I understand the numbers are 10 in K and 3 in 4, let's say 4 in 1, so that'd be 14 K-1, 8 in 2nd, and 3 in 3rd, so that'd be 11 in that combination, 7 in 4th, and 8 in 5th, so that would be 15 in that.
Okay, and what's your magic number that you need to join classes?
I don't know that, speaking for myself, I don't know that the board has ever decided on a magic number. I think it's just something that the superintendent, as the educational leader of the district, feels is appropriate, taking into account numbers and dollars and everything else that the superintendent has to take into account in presenting a budget. I'll let her speak for herself. in presenting a budget. I'll let her speak for herself.
I agree. There is no magic number. As far as being that it came up booth-free, I've already had conversation with Mrs. Kalella. They right now have a very small class. If next year they have another small class, they will have a K-one with one teacher, as Burnham has this year. But this year, right now, there's six kids in kindergarten and there's 15 in first grade, which makes 21, and 21 with one teacher is very difficult. So that's-
It was my understanding, though, that before, we were talking about seven or eight kids. If you had those few, that you would probably join classes. Right? Isn't that on the record that we have discussed those numbers?
I can't say that it hasn't been discussed. It may have been discussed. I don't believe the board has made a decision as to, this will be it. But I think you have to take into account, don't you, not just the seven or eight in one class, but how many are in the other class that you're proposing to combine it with? You have to take the total number, and I assume that's what the superintendent's done.
Okay. Well, I'm just really wondering if that alternative of three grades is a little less experimental than two grades. And when you put third graders in with fifth graders, that's a pretty big cognitive and educational gap that you're playing with there.
I want to repeat, I don't know if you were here last week.
I was.
Oh, okay. Well, right now, there are 40 kids going into Burnham next year. I have given four teachers to Mrs. Kalella for the classrooms and her staff to decide the best way. So I have no problem if the Burnham community goes back and come back and say, we're going to have one teacher K-one, one teacher two-three, one teacher four-five, and one's going to float and do math in all the classes, whatever. But I have given that authority to Mrs. Kalella, so anything that works is good with us.
Well, as a board, I think last week, even Valerie suggested that this might be a possibility. And that leads into the next concern, which would be, have you polled the families of the students? How do the parents feel about this? Because this is turning Burnham from a normal school into a showcase, experiment, pretty quickly. And I'm, you know, I wonder if the parents have been polled as to whether, you know, what if they decide they're going to pull their kids out? And you're actually maybe shooting yourself in the foot with that. So have they been talked to? And before, you know, we got behind the K-two partly because of numbers, and we had a good presentation, and those younger ages are easier to join, and everybody got behind it. And we worked at that very carefully and mutually and spoke to that. We haven't been through that process. But it seemed to me that three grades instead of two is a less bitter pill to swallow. And to that end, how are we pulling kids in here? And I know this is a little different topic, but I think we need to try to draw families in. And I know we've made a request in Bridgewater in our letter to you a couple of weeks ago, where we thought the tuition ought to go down to $5,500. And if you did something like that, and let's say we get back our 20% of tuition out, people coming in, and we've had interest in that, we could return that to the families as a tuition enhancement. And maybe it would cost them $4,500, which would be very competitive with the local schools, the Catholic schools, and things like that. And I've also reached out to Danbury and spoken to the mayor. And I don't know how far this will go, but I suggested that he possibly consider sending kids, if the price were right, instead of building new classrooms. He was very interested in that, and he said, Burnham's a great school. And I said, yep, school of distinction, we can handle kids. He said, how many? I said, how about 40? He said, well, that might be possible. So has anybody pursued that kind of thing? I know Brookfield isn't, but we need kids. And it's like we're not looking at that. You're trying to shrink it. And I think before you jump off on this direction, you may get a backfire on budget support if you did this. Adding another half teacher or para or whatever you have to add to have three classes, I think should be strongly considered as an alternative and involve the community and the parents and board discussion. It's not just up to Kathy. It's up to you. It's up to Pat. Let's look at some alternatives. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Valerie?
I agree that we could be more dramatic in terms of trying to help Burnham increase its student body. And you are very well-positioned because you're very close to New Milford, not too far from, certainly, Danbury and Brookfield. And indeed, Carolyn wrote a very good letter. We had a great presentation. We discussed it about perhaps some kind of decrease in our tuition, which has already technically been lowered because it's, we lowered our tuition, and then there were incentives provided kindly by the Selectmen and the PTO of Burnham, of Bridgewater. So I'd like to go further on that. And I'm hoping that this might be some kind of anomaly for the next few years. I have every confidence that this will work beautifully. I have every confidence in Kathy as an educational leader who knows those kids. But sure, we're not going to stop here. We truly are not going to stop here because it benefits us all as these kids go through Bridgewater and join us in the middle and the high school. We need more kids, and I hope this board will consider and also alert the other Selectmen or the other towns some real deep discount in tuition. But we can't yet do it.
All right. Anyone else want to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Joy Rupert, and I live in Bridgewater. I was here at the meeting last week, and I just wanted to clarify something. After a public comment was over, the three-through-five merge kept being referred to as a rumor. And I just wanted to let you know that it was definitely not a rumor. And at our PTO meeting, the day after the budget was presented, we were told that the budget included a reduction of one full-time teacher from Burnham, and that as a result, grades three through five would most likely be merged into one class with two full-time teachers. And then we come here last week, and we were told the plan was to have a K-through-two together, three and four together, and five with its own class. I feel like there's just a lack of a real plan for the kids at the time when the budget was presented, and it makes me feel a little uneasy. I understand because of the small class size that something needs to be done. But merging three through five feels rushed, and I just wish that more time was given to prepare for proper planning and research. And I also hope that shifting the focus to a three-through-five merge won't take away from any preparation that's still needed for the K-through-two merge that will happen next year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Angela Matrulo, Burnham parent. I have a third, currently a third and a fourth grader at Burnham. I, too, was here last week, and when I spoke, I referenced how last year at this time, we were given a challenge by Dr. Cosentino and by the board that we had to increase our numbers at Burnham, or we faced consolidation within our school. And we already had a K-one, and then we were moving to a K-through-two. And I mentioned that we had stepped up our efforts. We had put out DVDs. We had gotten brochures. We had approached the board, or our PTO president had approached the board, about a tuition cut. And then this week, it hit me. That's not our job. That's your job. That's not necessarily the Board of Education's job, because I understand that you are all volunteers, and I understand it is a thankless job. My uncle was the chairman of the Board of Education in Norwalk for countless years. So I understand that. But this is a region-wide problem. And this is something that our superintendent and our Board of Education needs to propose something. We need a line item for marketing. We are a business. We are Region 12. Your business is education, but it's a business. So we need to be in Connecticut Magazine and Litchfield Magazine and on Connecticut Style and Connecticut whatever else is on TV. And we need to promote our schools of distinction. And guess what, people of the state of Connecticut and elsewhere? This is the best-kept secret in the state of Connecticut, and that's the problem. We are the best-kept secret in the state of Connecticut. We need to get out there and market ourselves. And you can't throw it on the parents of Burnham to say, get your numbers up. We're the client. We're not the people that need to get our numbers up, but we are trying desperately, and we need help. We need that tuition cut. We need you guys to go out there, and we need to market our schools. In 2011, this board realized that there was a problem. That was seven years ago. You hired Randall Collins as your superintendent leadership profile report. And one of the things that he recommended, or he said that this board desired, was Region 12 desires an energetic, dynamic leader who is committed to long-term growth in the district. And I believe that we have put all our eggs in one basket at AgSTEM. I work for the state. We are seeing cuts like crazy. My agency is being cut. I don't know that we're going to get that money. I know we're on a top priority list, but nobody knows if we're going to get that money. We are losing prosecutors. We are losing DCF workers. We are losing troopers. I'm not so sure that their priority at the state is going to be AgSTEM. I haven't run the numbers myself, but if it's true from what other people have said and what I've been reading that those numbers that we expected might not necessarily be true, now we've got another white elephant. We need to make this the best school system we can. In addressing what Mr. Reed said, that number last year was seven. That number was told to me, told to Jeremy Tendler, another parent. If your class size drops below seven, you will be merged. Booth is coming in with six. They're not merging. They're kindergarten. I understand it would create a class of 21, but the initial consultant that tried to sell us on multi-age or multi-grade and wasn't quite sure what she was talking about, said the ideal class size was between 21 and 25. So you really can't have it both ways. There was a family that moved into this town in July. They were very concerned and sent a letter to our PTO president about last week's meeting. They put their house on the market last week. They have two school-aged children, one of whom is already at Burnham. They didn't last in this town longer than seven months. We can't keep decimating. We're down 29 kids. This year and last year, it's Burnham that's down. Next year, it could be Booth. After that, it could be Washington. I understand that you have said that the budget barely passed last time. We don't know why the budget barely passed. I used to live in Southbury. I voted the school budget down one year because I didn't think the increase was enough because I thought the kids were going to suffer. I didn't even have kids at the time. But I had done the research. So I would implore you to keep communication open with the parents. Again, that was brought up by Joy Rupert. Reach out to the parents of Burnham, see what they feel is needed. But go out there and get us kids. That is what the consultant said, that we needed a leader that would do, and that is what we need. If this is going to pass and if this is going to be a three-five or a three-four, I would encourage you. Kathy Kalella is a phenomenal educator. Every single teacher at Burnham are phenomenal educators. Listen to Kathy. And if you're going to make a decision and it's a done deal, please make a decision that she supports. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. Carolyn Dwyer from Bridgewater and the PTO president there. So, you know, it just seems like I keep asking myself, why are we even here? And having this discussion and all this angst? And I'd like to tell you why we're all here.
A staff member that I am not cutting from the elementary schools. We are not displacing that staff member. We are going to keep that staff member.
So that was last year, and that's how we got here. Because we were told that we weren't cutting a staff member. So you had your two administrators go forth to do what was educationally sound, which is what they brought to you on December 19th. So there are a couple of things just coming and sitting here from last week that I just wanted to set the record straight, or at least it's my record, and I think there are facts that back it. There was an assertion last week that parents couldn't know about the budget in advance because it wouldn't be the right thing to do, or that was the gist of it. But after, two weeks ago on Monday evening, and we heard that there was going to be a cut, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all went by. And we never heard from this administration. So it sounds to me like we're hiding a little bit behind that tagline of we can't tell anybody anything until the board knows. Because we still didn't know until our principal sat with us. And to Joy's point, we did have an hour and a half meeting regarding a three-five, so it was not a rumor. My next thought is about budgets just in general, and there seems to be confusion. I listened to Michelle Intently last week talking about lowering budgets and budgets passing. Budgets are not necessarily tied to the line items that you're putting forward this evening. They are often a reflection of the direction of the region, the leadership, the overspending throughout the year, and the lack of vision that a certain budget may put forward that year. Unfortunately, I'm seeing all of the above as your budget goes forward. I also want to address, and I think it's an easy thing to do when you start to look at numbers and this class has this and this class has that, and you start to compare schools, and I think it's a dangerous trap. But I also feel the need to defend ourselves a little bit. So when we keep saying, well, another school has 20 children and you only have six, so you don't deserve X, Y, and Z. I don't think you said deserve it, but that's my words. But then I go and I look, and I look at the numbers, and I look at the staffing, and I delve down, and I see that WPS has two full-time intervention teachers. And I think, okay, well, we have one that comes two hours every afternoon. And then I do the math, and I run the numbers, and I say, how many hours is that a week? And how many minutes does that come down to? And then divide that by the students. And what you realize is, in all this back and forth and nonsense, that the WPS kids have 39 minutes of dedicated intervention time per child per week, and we have nine. So, but it's not about that. It's about using your resources. It's about, if there's a class of 20 and it's a big class, take one of those interventionists and put them in the classroom, and then you can have your ratio of 10 to 1. At the last meeting, I requested a copy of the Region 12 Attorney's Position on the Regional Plan and Moving Students. And in looking at the conclusion, I'm actually not sure why we're talking about all these mergers. Because if you actually read it, it does say that we can move children. So it means as long as we have a K-through-five, we can move children interregionally. And I'd love to get a second, third, fourth opinion on that. And I am not, I am not an attorney, but it looks pretty clear to me. So I'm not even sure why we're having this conversation today. And I suggest that everyone on the board relook at that note, and we could probably just move students and call it a day here. Anyway, just on the Burnham piece, and I'm so glad Washington agrees with cutting. That was nice to hear. But you've cut all you can cut at this point from Burnham. There is nothing left to cut. And, you know, we've lost interventionists. We've lost Spanish. We've lost some music. And now we're down to four classroom teachers. And at some point, it just becomes about safety and keeping lights on. And I think you all know that, and if you don't, I think you need to really think long and hard about an emergency or something happening and not even having enough adults in a building. But anyway, I really think that there's not much left. And what, you're looking to us to market it, as Angela said, there's nothing in here that shows us you're going to market it. So where do we go? And I think the answer is, with parents starting to leave, and we've lost a couple this year because of the small class sizes, if you don't, aren't able to do what the attorney says, then I think when we go down this slippery slope very quickly, you're going to have to look in the mirror and wonder why we're where we are. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Valerie?
Well, it is true that there's a little bit of latitude in that attorney's opinion letter, although we still have to have a K-five- letter, although we still have to have a K-5 dedicated in each elementary school according to the regional plan. But, I mean, it was my impression, and I could be wrong, that Burnham would prefer not to move three kids from the third grade to join Booth Free, where it's 14 kids, making it 17-child third grade. I mean, I don't see that as an option. I thought we were all happy to keep our kids in their home schools. But if you're saying that the Burnham families wouldn't mind the board considering those transfers, then we should put that on the table, absolutely. I was not, I really didn't think that's where we were going. Or the other way around. Or the other way around. Well, but the deficit is at Burnham. So if we know educationally it's good to have more children in a classroom, you know, within reason, and if we could work out the busing, which I think we could do, I think, then moving some of those children from Burnham to Booth would make some sense.
Rebecca?
I spent a little bit of time with this opinion as well, and I think that the, if I'm reading it correctly, the problem that we're facing in regards to the issue of moving those three children out of Burnham, because everybody seems very happy to do that, with or without their permission, is that it removes the grade. And the issue that was put forth in the opinion was that we need to offer K through five in every one of the primary schools. And if the restriction is that we can't move those three children because we are in essence moving the grade, that restricts us from moving those children without their permission. And if that is the case, and if we have a situation where we have 20 children in Washington, then we could move children from that 20-student population into the three-student or four-student population in Burnham to make a smaller, more viable class in both Washington and Burnham. And having said that, I want to be clear that I'm not happy about negatively impacting any of our children, and I don't want to see any parents upset, and I don't want to see any children upset. And I think that both Teresa and Kathy have done a phenomenal job in working with Bridgewater and in getting this K-2 configuration done in a way that the parents have been comfortable. They are comfortable with the curriculum. It has been done in a timely fashion. I'm very concerned that this 3.4, 3.5 conversation is very fast. Those classes are more challenging, they're more complex. That doesn't mean that we're not going to end up there, and I think that that's what I heard in December, is that they were looking at doing it in an appropriate timeline. And I don't think that any of us should be surprised about that. I think that what surprised me was that suddenly the timeline got moved. And if we could potentially move some children from Washington to Burnham, having said that, I would prefer that we had volunteers, because I don't like to see anybody having to go, but it is within our right to do so if we need to, to justify keeping that full-time teacher and meeting our legal obligation to the three primary schools, that that wouldn't necessarily be for the next three years, the 3.4, 5., but that would buy time for them to do what they need to do to get this 3.5 configuration done correctly. Because we keep talking about how we want to make this the right thing, and this is something that's going to go to the other schools eventually unless we get more children. And we want to make sure that we're doing it right, and I think that this is a possible way to do it and buy a little bit more time.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board?
Bridge Water. I guess this is not a hearing, because nobody's presenting the budget. I guess that's what was happened in the past, but times have changed. I do have a question. I have a couple of questions. AgSTEM is included in this budget. Is that correct? Can you, are we allowed?
Yes, we're allowed. Would you calm down? You asked a question.
Well, it's a little hard for me to contain myself.
Well, okay.
So it is included in the budget, correct?
Hold on. Let somebody answer the question. Go ahead.
There is no AgSTEM staff, AgSTEM supplies, anything like that. I would like to ask Mr. Geeson to address the cost of moving forward with architects and such.
Included in this budget is $125,000 for the interest on a ban in the event we go forward.
Okay. In the case we don't go forward, in the case we don't goes forward, and maybe the state comes up a little short and doesn't have money to fund our $30 million project, or $33 million project. I assume there's a new budget? There would have to be a new budget. Is that correct?
Bob, can you answer that?
Pardon me?
I'm asking Mr. Geeson if he can.
I don't see why there would be a need to do another budget.
There would no need to do a new budget?
Nope.
You would have this $135,000?
$125,000.
$1,000 in the budget, and you wouldn't need to redo the budget?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, in February, you had a meeting and you authorized $1.3 million for the architect and ONG. Where did that come from? Where did that money come from? I've listened to all the recordings, and I can't hear. You know, I got to get a microphone for Bob Geeson so that he can speak. I plan to donate a microphone next, because either I can't pick up his hand signals or where did that money come from?
Money that we allocated up to this point comes from the existing budget, from the savings out of the accounts within the 16, 17 school-year budget, not for 1.3 million, but for three months' worth of work. That's all the board has authorized us to go forward with. We have to, if we go forward beyond that, we may have to take a ban out for the balance.
So you haven't borrowed additional money so far?
We're trying to avoid borrowing money until such times. We absolutely have.
And you managed to save some money, and you can't tell me where that's coming from?
It's come from a variety of accounts within that budget. It's come from the utility accounts. It's come from the benefits when we, when I negotiated the Blue Cross bills after the budget was adopted last year.
And how much was that?
I don't have the number exactly in my head, but I'll be happy to get it for you.
All right. I'll be glad to. I'm sure you have my email address, please.
Somebody, I'm sure, in the office.
I would like to add that when we do get the agri-science program, fingers crossed, that money that we are spending is 80% reimbursable. So that is, I think, something that is important to note.
Is that right? 80% of the science labs is reimbursable?
I didn't say science labs.
I was talking about the cost that Bob was just explaining about the money for ONG and KBNA, the architect, et cetera. When we get the agri-science program, that money is part of the
Reimbursable.
reimbursable amount of 80%.
So I guess the architects are not working on the science labs on this. This $1.3 million, none of that is going toward the science lab architecture. Is that correct?
They had completed most of that work already.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but they haven't gone to the actual building documents.
All right. Thank you very much.
All the preliminary work is done.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I have a question on budget line item 119.
Sir, would you state your name and where you're?
John Boniuto, Washington, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Tutors. When I asked this question last year, it was stated that most of the tutoring is in the elementary grades. And this year, I noticed there's eight tutors also, and the increase is a little over 2,000. There are 671 students in the school system, 93 teachers, and 34 paras, plus eight tutors. And I'm just wondering, as the population declines, how is it so imperative that there are so many tutors when each of the classes, especially in the elementary schools, are way under capacity?
I'm going to ask Mr. Geeson to answer exactly who these people are, but I do want to just say, we have some very large classes. At WPS, I mean, I have classes of 21, 22 students. I think even at Burnham, I have one or two classes. Let me just make sure. So we do have, not Burnham, I'm sorry, Booth Free. No, Booth Free, we have a 15 in grade one. So we do use the tutors. We have literacy tutors. Are they all literacy tutors, Bob?
You need to turn your microphone on.
Thought it was on. I'm not in the best position to define what each of these people are doing, but they're all devoted to the kids in the elementary school at this point in time?
If I could, just real quickly, just for information, if you go to your supplementary packet, it is page two at the very, very bottom. It is line item 119, 1250, if you want to see the detail.
Well, for instance, how many tutors are currently, are these tutors shared between the three elementary schools?
Yes. It's my understanding they are. They're scheduled out based on the need of the students, so as the students' needs change, the tutors obviously work with the students to bring them up to where they should be. And it can change month by month, basically.
Right. I can, if you'd like, and anyone else, I can let you know exactly how many are in each school tomorrow. I can email you, but I can tell you that they are under direct supervision of the building principals, and they are servicing students. So for example, we have, I believe, one in the K-1 class. Am I right at Burnham? Yes. So that person is a literacy tutor, and that person is in there all day long, and there's one certified teacher. It's a K-1 class. I believe there are 11 students, and that tutor is instrumental in delivering either the K or the 1 curriculum when there's small group instruction going on, and that's, they're not, they're not certified staff. So they're not, they can be certified, but under our umbrella, they are not certified staff. And they're very experienced. Many of them are former teachers or people who have teaching certificates, but because of family life or experience, they don't want to have all of the duties of being a teacher. But it's money well paid, and they work directly with the students to improve student achievement.
For those of us who are following along, we use the word interventionist and tutors. They mean the same thing, right?
No.
They don't?
No. Interventionists are certified teachers.
So those come under certified?
Right.
And the tutors?
Tutors do not.
But the tutors figure in not as paras either, though, do they?
No, they're like, if there was a hierarchy, tutors would be
In the middle.
In the middle. Right. So you'd have, interventionists are certified teachers, then you'd have tutors, then you'd have paraprofessionals. And so it's a different level of staff members.
But the paras are fixed. They don't change on a daily basis or anything like that, do they? Or are they shared?
Oh, paraprofessionals are shared. They, you know, one of the benefits of changing the schedule a couple of years back here at the building was to allow that the high school and the middle school could be on the same schedule. Therefore, paraprofessionals could be shared, and teaching staff could be shared. So instead of hiring a .3 and a .3, you were able to hire one full-time person. Now, a paraprofessional, most of our paraprofessionals work with our special education children. Okay? It's usually in their IEP. So that's where most of our paraprofessionals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else want to address the board? All right. Then I will, is there a motion to adjourn this public district budget hearing? All right. Valerie moves. Michelle seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right. The public district hearing is adjourned. We'll move on to our special meeting. Looking for my agenda. All right, I'd like to call this Region 12 Board of Education special meeting to order. It is about seven or eight minutes after 8:00 PM. Rebecca, would you take attendance, please?
Anthony Amato, Valerie Anderson, Alan Brown, Gregory Cava, Rebecca Devine, I'm here, Michelle Gora, James Hirschfield,
Here.
Stephanie Kolnick, Jennifer Pody, Lisa Rousch, Michael Sinatra, Peter Tagley.
All right, thank you. So I think we're all here. I appreciate everybody showing up tonight. All right. Discussion of the 2017-18 budget. Valerie, I'll let you continue. Is there any questions for Valerie? I'm not sure how you want to handle this.
Well, I wonder procedurally, I know that we have to have a motion to have some capital expenditures taken care of through the two funds we have. I don't know if we want to do that first.
That's in the next meeting.
Oh, that's the next meeting. Okay. Well, the pleasure of the board, we can go through this detail, item by item, which is a good idea, and then we can go and reference the supplemental section, which for those who are new to the board, is at the back of your pages, and it gives you the kind of great detail of the larger items. So we could start at the 100s. And we had a question about, from the audience, about tutors, so we were able to look at that detail. So, Michelle.
I would like to actually go through the budget like we historically have from the beginning, because I feel like
Good.
The context. Oh, my little sign. I just feel that the context is useful for the conversation, and I think it's really important, since we are talking about cutting staff, that we have a really good understanding of what exactly we have in our budget, because, you know, cutting staff is always difficult and painful, and we want to make sure that everything else in the budget is sound and tight, and we understand where it's going. And I have a couple of questions in the staffing section.
Okay, so let's start at the 100s, which are personnel services and salaries.
Wait a minute. Hold it.
I'm sorry, Peter.
Peter?
Sorry, Valerie. I disagree. If you wanted to attend all the budget meetings, the budget hearings that Valerie's committee had, I mean, you've had plenty of time to do that. I don't see, and in many years, well, yes, many, and I will say, Valerie, holding meetings during the day is, makes it very difficult. I don't remember in the past that we ever held budget meetings during the day. We usually held
We always have had workshops during the day, because the administrators come and give us, you know, their overview.
Maybe in the last three or four years, my recollection is, we always, Bob presented the budget, we went through it, et cetera, et cetera, but But I don't know going through every line item in the budget. For most board members, I think know very little about the budget. They know something about various areas of the budget, they may have some questions. But it seems to me to sit here and go through every blooming line item. That's why we have a superintendent, and we have Valerie, and we have Bob. I mean, I'm a bottom-line board member. I mean, does it fulfill, does it fulfill all of the issues that the superintendent and the staff have? I would assume that the superintendent and the staff wouldn't give us a budget that didn't satisfy the needs of the educational system. I've never set to the budget in 20 years, since 1985, when the staff put together a budget that didn't fix its needs. Now, maybe after three or four budget defeats, there were some problems. But in the last couple of years, the budget seems to move pretty well. So just, I'm giving you my personal opinion. I don't see sitting here and going through every aspect of these various items unless there's some egregious numbers that stand out. But when you have a budget at zero, my God, where can you go from there? I mean, unless somebody wants to add $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 to the budget, I would agree. If Michelle has a question, she wants to add $100,000, $50,000, $200,000, two particular line items in the budget, fine. I would accept board members who want to do that. But to sit here and go through every blooming line item in the budget, to me, is ludicrous.
Well, I do think it's our responsibility to review the budget, to know what's in it, particularly if we have some personnel changes, and this 100 is personnel services and salaries, to know that we have the coverage that we need to ask these questions. It is our responsibility. We can do it rather efficiently. But if there are questions, then they must be answered and discussed. And we have a good chunk of our administrators here to do just that, and they love to talk about numbers.
Well, I have no problem if a board member has a question or two or three about a particular number in the 2017-18 budget. But to take one page and go through every number in the budget, have Bob explain it or you explain it, to me is...
No, it wasn't my intention to go through the supplementary unless there's something specific. So why don't we just proceed with the 100s?
If I may, Peter,
Okay.
since you're a bottom-line guy, if you want to, you want to make a motion to approve the budget? And then have a discussion?
Yeah, I will. I'll put a motion on hold, accept the superintendent's budget for the 2017-2018 year.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Valerie?
Question.
Go ahead.
So, shall we discuss this item by item?
Having heard, having heard what Peter said, yes.
It's on the table. So, we're just going to be looking at the main part of the budget, the 100s, if we have to go, you know, dive deeper and go into the weeds. We're going to stay, as I say, we're on the grass level right now. Page three. We're on the grass, let's stay away from the weeds. And you may quote me. This section goes up, $337,000 or 2.71%. Bear in mind, this does not include the proposed staff cuts, nor their benefits, which we will handle when we get to the 700s. Are there any issues or concerns in the 100s, Michelle?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. And I also want to thank Rebecca for the questions that she had asked, because I thought those were really helpful and good questions. So, well, my first question is, the interventionists that we do have, are they in it with the teachers? I don't see where exactly they are. I'm looking at the supplemental, page 1 of 13. That's where you can see the breakdown of each of the categories. And I don't have a question with the administrators. I'm just wondering where the interventionists fall.
The interventionists are all in the 111 category, because they're certified staff?
They're certified teachers, but do they have their own category themselves, or are they assigned by building, so that...
They're both, they're in by building. If you were to take the staffing level out of the detail for each of the buildings, recorded within their assigned areas, for all of the salaries that are in here, everything was moved forward based on either contract, or if it didn't have a contract, it went into that degree change line that we hold, and it's in the detail in the 111 account.
Great, okay, that's great. I thought so, but I wasn't sure. Can I ask another?
Oh, sure.
So, on that same page, same category, 111, 2210, towards the bottom, System Professional Development District-wide. I'm guessing that's multiple people for doing maybe summer work, but I just wanted to clarify.
What page are you on?
One of 13. Same, same, I'm in the, I'm still in the...
You're in the detail page, not on the summary page. I just want to make sure what page you're on.
One of 13, we're in the 111s, the teachers.
Right.
2210, third from the bottom of that category, Professional Development District-wide. Yeah, 65,000. I'm just wondering, is that going to different people? Is that a person?
That's, that's to send the staff to develop professional development, or to bring people in for professional development.
Okay, so that's going to multiple people. I just wanted to double-check that.
The summer curriculum, if you're referring to that, is about midway through that 111 account.
Right.
And that's by itself, because that's strictly for curriculum development work.
Okay, and so this is for during the year? Thank you.
Rebecca, you had some questions about staffing. Were they answered? This was about more the tech staffing?
They were. Bob gave me some good clarity on that. I was having issues, because a lot of the lines refer to technology or variations on technology. And I know that we have staff, I know that we have services, and I just wanted a better understanding of what sat where. And I'm much clearer on that, thank you. I did, I wanted to, a point of clarity, the 2.71% increase that you referred to, it's my understanding that that's for the line and not the overall budget. Because one of the questions that I did ask last week was, just out of curiosity, if we put all the personnel that got cut back into the budget, that would be a 2.33 increase to the overall budget. So when we look at the percent increase at the 100 on page three, that is specific to the 100 line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you. And is this the place and the time to delve back into the issue of the third grade?
Why don't we wait for the 700s, where we really discuss that as a program reduction or improvement?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
We'll get there, fast. Alan?
Yeah, I guess Rebecca may have covered this, but I'm not familiar with it. The 122 line, I see that computer technology has been reduced, and it looks as if it is because the tech is being removed from WPS. What, how is that being made up for?
Karen?
Well, there's, it seems like the reduction is due to...
That, there was a tech position at the primary school that was split in half. That's correct.
Right.
Carried forward.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm missing a year here. I was skipping that one then.
And that detail, by the way, is in the middle of three.
So the tech, the middle school, high school tech specialist is going down slightly, somehow.
Alan, what line are you on, Alan?
I am on, if you really want to know the line, it is 1 dot 65 dot 122 dot 2221 dot 105. See what I mean? I'm the fourth line down in the salaries, computer tech, on page three of 13 in the...
Supplementary.
Supplemental.
All right, now we're getting...
Three of 13. Supplemental.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. Alan, again, can you tell us where you are now on page three of 13?
Yeah, if you go down to the third gray line from the top, that's salaries, computer tech. That is the total line of the area above it. And so that line and its summation lines above it are the ones that I'm looking at.
173891.
Oh, Alan, I believe it may, I think what you may be looking at is the reduction of the technology summer help.
Right.
Oh, okay.
We removed the summer help. I moved technicians around, and we're no longer using summer help. We have people on staff that we're using now.
Well, no, it looks like the proposed budget of summer help is, you're adding $3,500 for summer help.
It's a $3,500 flat amount, where I think what, because they're basically now all working... Yeah.
Well, no, it's simple, all I'm saying is, it just looks like somehow the tech specialists managed, you managed to get their salaries down from this year, I guess. Because you have 28, 780 for this year, and then for next year, you have 28, 348. Then for another one, you have 103,557, and then that goes down this year to 102, 236. And then you have a specialist that goes from 12, 202 to 11, 459. So I'm just wondering, how is this hours reduction, or are they taking a salary cut, or?
They're just working their normal number of days and not additional days. They were working additional days, because we had, what was it, one less person? So they were, they were actually, we were having the budget for more days. Now the days are spread out, so you don't see an increase.
If I might, if you compare this year to year, you're talking about a $500 difference in this area.
And we're in good shape.
Oh, no, I'm sure. I just don't understand how it exists, because it seems like you're budgeting, you budgeted more last year than the year before, and then this year, you're budgeting less. I just, I want to find the logistics. I mean, I imagine you're in good shape, I just...
Part of what happened is that we used to use interns coming in for the summer and during winter break. And what we did last year, at the current year that we're in now, we added a half-time position to Washington Primary School, removed the full-time position to Chapag. So what we were able to do is to cover more hours with less staff, so we didn't need to have the additional person for the intern in the summer. But we still have our regular technicians working summer hours, if that makes sense.
Okay, it does.
Michelle?
I have a question about the same category. Could you just remind me, and I think you just touched on it, the tech specialist for WPS is zeroed out. How is that being met?
It was, there's some monies that were in a grant for one year that covered the portion of it. The rest of it is in the library account for that person.
Okay, so it's a full-time, that's half library and half grant?
It's still full-time, but there was a, it was a two-year grant, and we took advantage of using some of that money to get the budget down.
Okay, and can I ask then, the 122, 221, well, it's just easier to say the name, Educational Tech Specialist Middle High School, is that, is that one person? Which, which?
It's two people.
Two people.
Is that, is that Joan, or is she a library?
No, Joan is library.
Karen Waputek and...
And Maureen Brown.
Maureen Brown, oh, that's right, because she moved from WPS up here. Right, so then that means Vic must be up above...
He's a network administrator.
Network administrator, okay, so that's, I remember. Thank you very much.
Are we finished with the 100s? Moving on to the 200s, employed benefits, which went up 5.74%, despite Bob's intense negotiation for medical insurance. Any questions about this, these benefits? Done and done, moving on, going, going. Page five, please, 300, purchased professional and technical services, up 1.85%. Any questions? Relatively static. No questions. 400s, purchased property services, down 4.24%. Any questions? And no one wants to ask about water services or sewer? Yes, ma'am?
Well, and I know, I mean, I did go to all the budget meetings with Don. I just, I get concerned when I see that the building repair and upkeep is going down, just because of our four buildings are only getting older. I did notice that we're doing a fair amount of capital work more this year. And so I'm just wondering if that's where we're thinking the offset is, just...
That primarily is what's going on, because that influx of $100,000 every year out of the lease, that would have been into normal budget building upkeep. But it's been taken care of over the last, what is this lease now, six years we're into it?
Yeah, maybe.
And so you've got almost $600,000 worth of repairs out of that money, just devoted to those three elementary schools. And they've taken care of a lot of the problems. And some problems still crop up.
Right, well, I'm just, I'm just looking at the actuals.
Right.
You know, and the actuals for 214, 15, 15, 16, where we're tracking for this year, they're all significantly higher. So I just don't want to under-budget.
We're not under-budgeting, but some of those, I'm calling deferred items, were picked up when the money was available, because he, Don either didn't have, he spent less in electricity or less in other parts of the budget. So we made sure the money got put back into the buildings.
Okay.
Great.
It'll happen all the time.
Thanks.
Make no mistake about it, it's a slim budget. All right, and when you take money out for maintenance, you have less of an opportunity to get ahead of things before they become problems. But we are trying to work within the budget parameters that have been established for this budget. And that means we're going to spend less, which means that we're going to have situations that could possibly come up, where we're going to have to be creative in terms of solving problems that arise. Now, one thing that we, that Don has done brilliantly over the years that he's been here, is he has gotten ahead of a lot of things, and he has reduced costs for responding to a lot of things. And so we have been fortunate in that respect, and that's given us more running room. But these buildings are old. The newest building in the system is the one you're sitting in, which is over 40 years old. And we can expect that there will be things that will come up, and we will not be able to address them perhaps as expeditiously or as in advance as we would like. But that's part of what happens when you, remember, we call this a zero budget. It's not a zero budget. It's about, if last year's budget was about 1.8% less, this is another 1.8% less than status quo, because we're at zero. You know, and when you drop, and you don't get any bigger, you're still dropped from what you were. So over two years, it's not 1.8, it's 3.6 is where you are off from where you would have been if you kept a zero budget two years ago. So this is the effect of that. The effect of that is when you try to stay at zero after you already come off a higher level, you're going to have to take money out of somewhere, and this is one area where it's coming out. So don't kid yourself. There may be issues that can come up. We're doing our best in facilities to try to control them, but it's a good question.
Which is why we have the 1% fund to take care of that, plus the lease. And also, with any luck, we will have some, within the modifications of AgSTEM, some things addressed here in this building.
Some things may ultimately get addressed, because they'll be replaced as a result of that construction project.
Right.
The other thing to bear in mind is, we can only hit the 1% fund for capital. And some of these things are maintenance. Maintenance is not capital, and you can't do maintenance out of the 1% fund. So that's something to keep in mind.
Okay, anything more on the 400s? Shall we go happily to the 500s, my favorite section? Any questions on the detail, and I will not bore you with the 512? Michelle?
Just a couple, you know, where I noticed significant change. 531 telephone, cell phones, et cetera, that is almost, almost double what we'd been spending in the past. Is this the new VO, the voice whatever thing?
We put, we put telephones in every single room where they weren't before. It's part, it's part of that issue, it's also security. It ties into the security plan of the district as well, to have each one of these rooms with a phone installed in it, and there's a monthly charge for them.
All right, yeah, it looks like most of that, or a good, a good portion of that increases up here at Chapag, the telephone. They just, they didn't have phones in any of them.
There was also in the elementary schools as well, but you don't have as big a facility.
That's true, that's true.
You know.
Right, where that was all zero. Okay, I just, I mean, I guess it's a safety concern.
It's partly safety, and it's partly the modernization of the phone system.
Okay. I also wanted to just quickly ask about the 561 Tuition Special Ed, other public schools gone down significantly. Have we graduated someone out? Are we...
Is Ally here?
Ally has...
Oh, she was ill. There are, she made a reduction, but it's all predicated on students that she knows are going into those programs.
Okay, as long as we, I just wanted to make sure it was still appropriate. It looks like it's fine, considering this year's, what we're tracking for, for this year.
Yeah, I believe there's one or two students that actually aged out.
I was just going to say, I think there was one aged out.
And I think...
Because we give services until age 21.
Correct.
Right, okay.
I want to ask about... I want to ask about, I'm sorry, Lisa?
Okay. My question is, the transportation, 512, in District Private?
My favorite.
Go ahead.
And so, excuse me.
Did you pay her for this? You paid her, right?
I love new board members.
I won't have to answer that. I'll let Valerie do it.
Okay. If, if your question is, what the heck is that, 512?
Yes.
That is a state unfunded mandate that we, Region 12, have to provide transportation or stipend to parents of private school kids that live in our district.
And the school has to be in our district.
Right. So unfortunately, unfortunately, we have a lot of private schools. So indeed, I don't think we, our population for gunnery maybe isn't involved here?
It's, it's borderline every year because there's also a requirement that the students have to be resident. Over half of the students have to be resident of the state of Connecticut. So in the case of the gunnery, that fluctuates from year to year depending what their population is.
So i.e., if we have two students that live in Washington that need transportation to the gunnery, we must provide that or give a stipend. The equivalent is now what, about a thousand?
About $1,000.
To that family.
But if it's not mandated, why?
It is mandated.
It's, it's a state mandate.
It is an unfunded state mandate. And if you notice, we've been like $137,000 taxpayer dollars. At least we've come down a bit, and that could easily go up again if the composition of those private schools changes. We have Montessori, we have Rumsey.
Montessori, we do in fact run buses because they're sufficient, and it makes, it makes economic sense in the number of students. For the other schools, it doesn't, so we use the reimbursement method. So otherwise, it would cost us either a lot of money or we would have to stop transporting them somewhere in the mid, late in the spring sometime. So it just makes more sense to do it this way.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the question. Uh, Michelle?
Just a quick comment. I just wanted to remind everyone that those parents are taxpayers too. So I, I know I hate seeing it in the public school budget, but before we get too, like, worked up and alienate people, you know, they're taxpayers and.
I've never been worked up about this.
You're always worked up about it.
I mean, we have seniors too. I don't have a kid in the system. I pay my taxes. I don't get a compensation for that.
That's true.
Moving on. Uh, any other questions about this section? I do have a question about 590, other purchased services. If you go to the detail on page eight of 13, it just seems to be a lot of things going on. I wonder why we have such a general category for that.
590?
The, yeah.
590.
590, other purchased.
I had a specific question.
Go ahead.
In the 590, if you look at the detail on eight of 13, a bunch of the enrichment programs at the, at all of the schools were, that money was cut. So I was just wondering how those programs were going to be met. And then there was a large cut in special ed, which was purchased services, which might be that graduated student, which is fine, but I just wanted to ask.
I don't have, I unfortunately don't have the detail of what, but that came out of discussions with Ally and her budget. And she justified it at the time. I just don't recall what it is. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, I mean, as long as she's aware.
And the, the enrichment, we did reduce it. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we put it in as a new program, some more cultural enrichment. And then I believe we moved some of it to the budgets of the schools. But we have over the years reduced it a little bit. You know, our principals are pretty good between them and the PTOs of bringing in a lot of cultural programs, but, you know, you have to sometimes make some cuts.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know in the past they've shared, and I, I was just wondering if they're going to be able to?
Oh, they continue to share.
Okay. As, as, and, you know, as long as those are still happening.
Yep. They're still, they still happen, and it brings it back in line. We, we monitor it also against the actual, looking back at it.
Okay. That's, okay. Thank you.
We have worksheets, and I was just looking, trying to find Ally's worksheet, but I'll, I'll keep looking. It's in this. Oh, excellent. Okay. Because that, that would be good to know. Okay. So any questions, any more questions about the 500s? Are we okay with that? It's a decrease of 1.44%. Everyone's happy with that. So let's go to 600s, which are supplies, which go down 10%. Any particular issues with this?
I'm sorry, we're in the 600s?
600s, page eight.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
I have an issue. Oh, go ahead, Ally.
All right. I, um.
Greg?
I see some significant cuts in supplies for programs, and I want to know whether or not these represent cuts in program. For example, you see a, a $3,000 cut in technology supplies for Washington Primary. You see a $10,000 cut in art supplies.
Yeah. What is your supplemental page?
Well, this is, it's pay, I'm sorry, it's very hard to do this on this little screen. It's page nine of 13, here in the 611s. And I'm looking, and if you look at line, the line that says Supplies Technology, WPS, it's about halfway down that page, you're going to see about a $3,000 cut there, but there's a significant cut in art supplies. And I can't find that now. Yeah, it's line 1,001-212E, and that's at the, at the high school. And it's a $10,000 cut when you had 19,000 budgeted, 22,008 used, and 12,994. So what, what are we cutting there?
Kim?
Right. That, that was a program improvement last year that went into that line for a lot of digital cameras. And so it's really not a cut of supplies per se. It's just a program that we funded last year that we don't have to fund this year.
Thanks.
As far as the supplies, I know at WPS and some of the others, we have reduced color ink. It's been a big cost. We need to change the culture that we do not print as much as we used to. So that is where some of that came from. And the budgets were set by the principals and the administration. And then after the budget was done, I asked everyone to do another 10, 5 or 10% reduction. So, five? So yeah, so that's where that is. There's nothing here that impacts program per se where we're going to lose a program or part of a program. I think we have to just be a little more responsible and fiscally efficient this year, and that's where we are.
Michelle?
I just wanted to say.
Yeah, I wasn't finished with that question. All right. So, so we're not cutting any programs as a result of these cuts, but are we cutting the efficacy of the programs we have?
I don't believe so.
You don't believe so, or we're not?
We're not.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Greg?
I'm finished. Thank you.
I was just going to speak to that. When we met with the principals during the budget workshops, this year, it looks like several categories are going down, but it's actually because we had purchased the materials in years past. A lot of new kits and program, you know, whether it was science or, or English or math. And they just weren't needed this year because we've purchased them in the year past, or we were able to purchase what they were looking for in this current budget. So the program, they were, they asked for what they needed. They included a few kits that they did need, but we did pretty well on stocking them in the last couple, two years.
Any other questions about supplies, 600s?
I just have a question. Why don't we use solar energy? Seems to me that this location, if you look at this place here, it's the most perfect place in the world for solar energy.
What I will say to you is, this has come up before. It is on Don's plate. I know as we start to plan for the agri-science program, that that is on the minds of our architects. But it is something that we are thinking about, and I would just think maybe we can wait till Don's here and he can give you more information.
Greg?
Yeah, the, two things I wanted to address. One, I wanted to reply to Pete's question. We looked into this a few years back, Pete, and the problem we found out is, is that the, the cost of adding it, it, it does eventually pay for itself in energy savings, and it pays for itself just about the time when it's time to replace it. And we decided that we really could not get a lot of, of efficacy out of that program. We've been looking at it, we keep looking at it as there are more, you know, as we see how the tax, we don't only get any tax benefits, which is what, what, what average residential people can get from it. We don't get that to any great extent because we're not a taxpaying entity. So there's a lot of reasons why it's not as, it's not as workable here. I wanted to address energy though, in terms of fuel oil, because I, we had a question on this. I particularly had a question on the facilities committee when we saw the budget. And the reason for that was, is that the, the fuel oil budget seemed to me to be artificially low in light of the fact that the rate per gallon has reduced. It, it looked to me that we were, we were maybe budgeting under, but I had some further information that Don developed for me, which leads me to believe that in some, on some buildings, we are budgeting at, above the, pretty much the highest we've ever spent on those buildings. Some of them are below the median. But it has to do in part with efficiencies that the buildings have achieved. So I'm not, I don't, I'm no longer as concerned as I was that we were going to run out of oil or we were going to budget too little oil. But again, I call your attention to the fact that this is a very slim budget, and there's not going to be as much room for, for error as we have. And I sincerely hope we don't get hit with another really ridiculous cold winter coming up, so. But, but I'm, I'm satisfied after talking with Don that these numbers are, are within the realm of what makes sense.
Bob, do you want to add to that?
No, I mean, I, I did the numbers when Don first put the budget together roughly, you know, my way of doing it in an average gallons over a number of years. Don went back and reconfirmed exactly what Greg is saying right now, and it appears that we should be okay. But the efficiencies came in because we replaced boilers down at Booth Free School. The steam heat that was costing us a lot of money in Washington was fixed, so we're not using as much oil there. So some efficiencies also drove some of the gallons out of the, out of the total requirement.
Any other questions about the 600 supplies? Okay, moving on to eight, 900, dues and fees, debt service. Any questions? Okay. And the revenues by source, as you know, the tuition goes straight to the towns or is credited against their, their bill to us. And we do have some grants. So let's talk about the program improvements or changes, which would be the 700s. And any questions about that detail? Michelle?
As Pat mentioned, we, we spoke a little bit, and I would like to propose that we put a .4 music teacher back into the budget. She, she mentioned to us last week that they were trying to, to schedule so that the elementary music wouldn't get cut, but it was going to be pretty close, pretty tight. And I, I just don't want to cut any program at this point in time, but I do see how we probably don't need a full-time person. You know, our, our enrollment has, has shrunk enough. And that I think that one person was traveling between the schools and up at the middle high school. So it seems that a .4 would alleviate making the high school staff just sort of crazy trying to service the middle school, or trying to service the elementary schools. And I think a robust elementary music program is really important feeder for our middle school, high school, so.
Could you give us the detail? We see a $64,252 decrease, are you, for one FTE. So what's your, what is your proposal?
To put back .4 of that? I don't know the cost, so we would need that from Bob.
$25,700.
Say again?
I'm sorry.
Would be put back. Alan?
What is, is that one FTE music teacher that was on the budget to be removed? Was that one person or is that two piece? That was one person?
One person.
And what did that one person do?
They did bands at the elementaries, grades four and five, and bands at the middle high school first period. Strings, I apologize. Strings.
So the idea is if we, if we return .4, that will be sufficient to do band at the elementaries?
Strings.
No, band at the elementary. I know, believe me, this is.
Band at the elementaries?
Yes.
And so those programs won't change?
Right.
But what happens to strings? Then?
The, the high school teacher is able to pick that up.
Able to pick that up?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just wondering, when you talk about, you know, our, our population affecting that, it doesn't seem like, you know, you know, if there's less kids, they still need music in elementary school, so I guess it's a good idea to put that back in. I just make sure we put enough back in. But if, if, if it was .4, I'm just trying to figure this out. Strings was every day?
No. No, no, no. Band at the elementary was not every day.
No, but I'm saying, I'm trying to figure out.
String, at the middle high school, it was in, you know, the schedule. So the schedule periods drop out. So I can't say it's every day. Six of seven days.
And then band, I'm just trying to make sure there's, .4 is enough to recover elementary?
I, I, you know, after speaking to the staff, I had a long meeting today with David Reposo, and he thought that .4 would be plenty.
Because .4 is?
It's two, it's two days, but not necessarily will it be two days. Depends on who he can get to take the position. I don't, the person.
It would be divided up on a weekly basis by three, three schools and two days each week. Two days worth, obviously, like.
Right. Two days, right.
Several half-days or whatever, hours.
Be determined.
Yeah.
Greg?
Yeah, now you've, you've said that the, that you're not going to make any reductions to the elementary band program because .4 is enough to cover the three schools on elementary band. Is that correct?
We're, we're able currently, right now, with the three teachers that are in the music program, to cover band in grade five without any problems and not hire anyone. We were planning on adding grade four, and we were going to offer the music teacher here at the high school to teach grade four band, and it would cost us a stipend based on our contractual agreements with the teachers. And that was the plan. But after, I think Mr. Reposo, after the weekend of really thinking about that, he just felt we were stretching people too thin. And that he, after I spoke to Michelle, you know, he thought it would be a good idea to put the .4 back.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, okay, well, I'm just not getting it. I'm not understanding. What do we have now at the elementary schools?
Currently now, we have Ashley Kirk, who's a full-time music teacher, and she does all of the music, general music lessons and the performances, the chorus, okay? So that's what she has. Then we have David, who does?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding this. At the, this is all at the elementary schools?
Okay. So we have Ashley Kirk, and then we have Anthony, Adam Nanavati, and he teaches band at the elementaries, grade four and five. That's what we currently have.
So, so you've got Mr. Nanavati teaching band at the elementaries, four and five, and he does that full-time? Or he also teaches strings at the high school?
And then he comes and he teaches strings at the high school.
Or at the middle high school?
Middle high school.
At Chappag. Okay. Now, the next question is the, the, the other teacher, Ashley. She teaches what? Okay, now the next question is the other teacher, Ashley, she teaches what chorus at the, at the, at the elementary schools?
Yeah, general music and she does the, all of the shows, the winter concerts, the spring concerts.
Right, right. And what does she do at the middle high school at Chapag?
Nothing.
So we're going from a full-time, a one-point-something situation. You've got a full-time elementary music teacher and a part-time elementary music teacher in Mr. Nanavati.
Right.
And you're going from that to .4.
No, 1.4. I'm not touching Ashley.
Okay, so you're keeping one, you're going to .4. How much of Mr. Nanavati's time is currently spent at the, in the band program at the elementary schools?
You know, it's hard to devise because a lot of it has to do with lessons. It's a lot of lesson time. So David is picking up part of the strings program at the middle high school. So if I take that piece out, it's got to be close to, I would say, almost half-time, maybe a little less. And then now he's going to be at, the new person, whether it's Adam or someone else, will do .4. But honestly, we're able to be a little more efficient with the time.
How?
We're able to combine classes because now.
What classes are we combining?
Well, realize, we know, we only have one fifth grade now at the, at WPS, lost 29 students at the elementaries. We only had, we've lost, one class of fifth grade is at WPS. We have possibly a K-1, 2 combination and a 3, 4, 5 at Burnham. We will put probably for some lessons, K and 1 together at Booth Free.
Yeah, but this is all your general music teacher. You know, you have, when you talk about K-1, 2, 3, 4, K-1, 2, 3, you're talking about the general music teacher.
No, I understand that.
I'm going back to the band teacher and it doesn't seem to me the band teacher has any less, has any reduced duties as a result of anything because you probably were having one band class at Washington Primary as it was, right?
No, no, we were having more than that because they had, that's a big class that's going up from WPS. They had two groups. They had two classes, remember going to one class?
And you're going to have one, why did you have two before? Why not one? Seems like a bigger band is better than a smaller band. Why would we have two?
It's the same, it's the same class, but they meet it, you know, what happens is, and I've learned a lot about this, I'm not an expert, but there are all different instruments. So all of the different instruments have to have different lessons and you, I said, why can't we like limit the amount of instruments? Well, you can't do that, be based on students' facial and structure and preference, et cetera, et cetera. This is, the point I'm going to make is that we will be able to make it work with 1.4 teachers at the elementary school.
Well, I mean, you say that, but I have serious doubts about it and I'm.
Maybe Mrs. Judd can shed a light better than me.
One piece that might be missing in the conversation is that Ashley Kirk would be taking on some of the band students because she's combining some of the classes.
Right.
She's going to free up time in her schedule at Booth and Burnham. So she's going to take some of the band and this .4 then would serve mostly, I think, Washington Primary School and it's in the music booth, but I think this Washington Primary School. In my opinion, it will, I also believe that that will be enough time to cover the band.
All right, now, going on to the middle high school, to Chapag, what's, why does, can you explain how Mr. Reposo has time to take over Mr. Nanavati's duties at the middle high school?
I'm going to ask Mrs. Ferrara to do that, because she did the schedule. I think she can talk to that, please.
In the past, we had what's in the middle school, what's called an A day and a B day. So let's say there was seventh grade band and there was enough students to divide it to have an A day and a B day so that they practiced in like-minded groups and then during advisory, they came together to play. But as the enrollment is declining in the middle school, David wants to have all that seventh grade students in just A day and he wants all the eighth grade students in just B day because he wants, well, first of all, their skill is building, but he wants them, like you just said, together now. So David has, for the seventh grade period, he has B day open and for the eighth grade period, he has A day open. So in effect, he has a .2 open that he didn't have before because he consolidated his A, A and B for grade seven and eight.
And that's enough to cover the string program that otherwise would be lacking?
Yeah, .2. The string program is one period a day, so it's exactly that, yeah.
All right.
Alan?
So from what you just, your answer to Greg, that means that Mr. Nanavati won't be at Burnham anymore and that Ashley will be now taking care of band for fourth and fifth at Burnham. But wasn't she already first time, a full-time?
Yes, she was a general leader.
Right, but if she was already full-time, how does she have more time to do, to teach two bands now?
Well, because the classes are being, the smaller class size, instead of having one K music class, one first grade music class, one second grade, now she has one K-2.
Okay.
Then it allows her schedule open opportunities for lessons.
Gotcha.
Okay, so do we want to, we have a motion to approve the budget. Do we want to make a modification of this, that we are now going to have a .6, if I'm doing this right? Music teacher?
.4.
.4, well, the decrease is a one. So in the end, we're decreasing .6, right?
Yeah, you're right.
But how do you want to do this?
Maybe the cleaner way to do it would be, Peter, will you withdraw your motion to approve the budget?
Okay.
Valerie, will you withdraw your second?
Yes.
All right, so there's no motions on the floor.
Okay.
Michelle, do you have a motion?
I could make this motion, although would it be easier to do it all together or should we go one piece at a time? Because I would move that we put, return .4 music back to the superintendent's proposed budget, which would then be only a reduction of .6 instead of one. So I don't, whichever way is clear. So that would be an increase of $25,700 to the original proposal.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Bob, what does that do to the 0% budget? Can you tell us?
Puts it at .12%. New number would be $21,387,146.
Right, but an increase of .12%.
Correct.
All right. Peter?
I'm not going to support this. I'm going to support the original budget. I don't see us to be micromanaging the budget. If the principal's needed, if the superintendent needed, there's no doubt in my mind, looking at this type of budget, they wouldn't have pumped this into the budget since this isn't a 3 or 4, 5% increase in the operating budget. So, I mean, I trust the superintendent, her staff, that what they're giving us is what they need. If they needed more, there's no doubt the ladies would ask for more. I mean, I, yeah, I know, but that's what I'm saying, they would have put it in the budget themselves. So I'm not going to approve this.
All right. Any other discussion, Valerie?
I concur.
Any other discussion? Alan?
Yeah, I have been uncomfortable all along with the, with the 3, 5 merge and it's not because of the necessity of the merge, obviously, of the small class sizes. It's the process and the way it was handled that makes us, it puts us in jeopardy of this working at the kids' disadvantage based on the fact that we were told in December.
Excuse me, Alan.
We're on the wrong motion.
The motion is to add a .4 music teacher.
No, the motion is to approve the budget.
No.
No, 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 no. It's just Michelle's motion to redo, to increase the budget by .6.
But so do we?
By point.
All right, so we vote on that and then we, we vote on that and then we vote on the budget?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to play around.
If anybody.
All right.
So this is strictly on the music teacher cut?
Is there anything else on the motion? The motion, as I understand it, is to add a .4 music teacher, which is, will increase the budget from 0% to .12% increase. Is there anything else? Greg?
No, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not putting up my hand, I'm just holding it here.
Okay. Anything else? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Okay.
Opposed, raise your hand. Opposed, raise your hand, please, to the motion. Any abstain? Have you got that?
So it's 10 in favor, two opposed and no abstains.
Okay. All right, so that motion passes. Is there anything else? Valerie, do you want to take over? Any other?
Well, if we want to stay, well, why don't we look at capital technology? Are there any concerns or questions about that, which is an increase of $59,252, which is capital technology, 733? We're just on the 700s now.
Yeah, page nine.
And any questions about capital facilities, 734? These would be the additional, separate from what we can fund through our other two accounts. Any questions about the increase of $122,770? And Greg, did you have a question about the 734?
No, I don't.
733?
I.
Okay, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Costino, if the board directed you to reduce the 734 budget by $25,700, could that money be found, could that be funded out of the 1% fund?
Yes, we could make that happen.
Bob, is that right? Do you, I don't mean to, I don't trust you, I'm just, just trying to confirm.
If you want, I'm a little unclear. You wanted to take the $25,700?
Out of capital facilities. Could it be paid for in another way, instead of in our operating budget?
Move it to either the 1% or the elementary fund.
The schedule is so tight that if you can't make that schedule, if it's not going to work, if you're not going to be able to put something together, you would have already have passed the budget and foreclosed the, you're not going to have any money to engage any other teachers. And then you're going to be left stuck. And it would be one thing, I can understand, the last time it took a year, this isn't going to take a year because you've already learned certain basic things that'll shortcut the time, but you're not going to shortcut all of it. And if you need eight months or nine months instead of a year, you don't have it, you've got three. And if it's not going to work, you're not going to be able to go back to a situation in which you either have two teachers to facilitate a situation that is not working or you'll be able to just simply keep the status quo ante with a group of three students who are currently being educated by a single teacher. I'm worried about that. I think that, that by taking it out of the budget, we, you could still, even leaving that teacher in the budget, you could always still make the change you want to make if you can do it effectively. But if you take the teacher out, you foreclose the possibility of going back to that. And I think that with the short period of time, I would feel more comfortable if we, if we did not eliminate that FTE and I'm going to move that we add that FTE back into the, back into the budget. Is there, all right, Alan, seconds. Any discussion, Valerie?
Well, so basically you want a dedicated teacher for three kids. It's unconscionable. It is.
It's not what I said.
Basically, you're adding five kids for five, five teachers for five grades. And we have a great plan now. Kathy is enthusiastic about it. This is something that was started, a conversation was started in December. This board seems to conveniently forget. These population changes are not going away. Once again, everyone, take a look at the population. These things don't go away. If we're lucky, we might gain one or two kids. But what we forget constantly is that we just don't have Burnham parents. We have all our other citizens that are saying, what is this board doing with our limited resources? I mean, we want to be responsible to our taxpayers too without, underline, without causing any disruption to the excellent education these children will get at Burnham. And talk about parity. I mean, then why don't we add every kind of teacher back into this? Look at WPS. We have two classes of 20 or more and yet our principal there thinks that with dedicated, experienced teacher and paras and interventionists, they can really make that work. And I think, you know, we've got to get away, it's just unconscionable that we are going to start throwing more teachers at Burnham after we have demonstrated again and again that we can handle this group in a very creative way and they're too, too small to have a dedicated teacher in, with three kids. Have you walked into these classrooms with a teacher and three kids? This is not proper education. We should be ashamed of ourselves to allow that to happen because these kids are not benefiting from socialization of any sort and we are squandering taxpayer dollars.
Actually are, but. Michael?
I just want to clarify, I mean, first of all, we're not talking about throwing a teacher at Burnham. We're talking about a cut at Burnham. So let's just start with that. We're not, we're not talking about adding a teacher at Burnham. We're talking about keeping our staffing levels at the same level as they have been this past school year. I also want to look at some of the suggestions that we've had from the audience. We had two really good suggestions on how we could deal with this problem. One from Curtis Reed, who was talking a little bit about thinking outside the box, something we really, I think, are in desperate need of doing. And maybe possibly bringing in out-of-district students. That would be wonderful if we could work with Danbury or any other area schools. The other possibility would be, again, to look at making a shift from other elementary schools to even that number out. If the, if the issue is that small number of students, which by the way is four, I think we keep going down to three with the idea that one of those students, because they're a staff member's child, is a second-class citizen. I don't believe they are, they're still a student, there are four students in that grade. I'd like to see if we can first start voluntarily looking at other students who might be interested in making the move over to Burnham. We do have parents that already do that. It would not take a lot of effort on our part to ask if parents would be interested in making that move. Possibly some of them would be interested in moving to the third grade at Burnham. We could even those numbers up. Even if it's not a lot of students, we could certainly get to the same level that Booth Free has of six students, which apparently is okay there, but somehow that, even though we keep saying that there's not a magic number, appears that there is a magic number for Burnham. So why don't we try either of those two ideas? I don't think that would cost us a lot. And we can go from a really hasty rush decision to a well-thought-out decision.
Michelle?
I'm glad you brought that up and I didn't know whether during the public hearing or now would be the right time. Just to address a couple of Curtis Reed's suggestions and I, because I feel that they deserve talking about a couple of things. The first that he mentioned was like, why didn't we look at a K-1, a 2, 3 and a 4, 5 having three classes? That seems less dramatic. And that was actually the board's original proposal, but the educators did not feel that 2, 3 was a good match curricularly, that, you know, the third grade students are preparing for the S-Back and the testing and that it's just a much different level of curriculum. And so they felt that the K-2 was a better fit and that the 3, 4, 5, all preparing for S-Back are more curricularly fit to be together. Having said that, and so that, so I just wanted you to know that that was where the board originally was. It seemed to make sense, instead of going to two classes of three grades, going to three classes of two grades. It just happens to be the way we're configured. That didn't work as well because of curriculum. But that does not mean that there can't be creative ways of using those staff members. And I appreciated what Kathy said about, instead of having one teacher in the 3, 4, even though that teacher would only have 11 students, it would be one person responsible for two curriculum and that is a fair amount. Whereas if they put those three grades together, then each teacher is responsible for one and a half grades of curriculum. And so, they could have one person, for example, be in charge of all of the math, and one in charge of language arts, or however they want to split that up. I do think, though, that there are other ways they could create time, whether it's having the very small third-grade cohort group up with the K-2, whether it's they have different lunches, or different recesses, or different specials, so that the... That they have time on their own for curriculum, and that the 4 has time on their own for curriculum. You know, they can figure some ways to make sure that all of the curriculum is being met. But I appreciated that thought. The other thing I wanted to mention, because I've heard it tossed about a lot, about moving students from one school to another. And we do have students from, I think, mostly Washington in the other two buildings. I think there might be... All of them moved? Yeah. You know, so parents have made those choices. And we looked at this a lot back when we were talking about consolidation, but before, when we had all of our options on the table, we were looking at our elementary schools. And we had our administrators put together a bunch of different options. We looked at, could we make them, you know, foreign-language magnet students? We... Or schools? We looked at all sorts of things. And redistricting, and... Or making one school a K-2, and one a 3, 5. We looked at a bunch of things. And one thing that came up several times with just shifting students is that siblings would no longer be in the same building. And that would be challenging for parents to have... So if we were to try to shift... If we were to try to equalize, for example, our third grade, and try to make... Shift some from Washington to Roxbury, and some from Roxbury to Bridger, and try to equalize the third grade, that could possibly put them siblings in different buildings than... Because those same needs might not exist in the other... The grades, the number of students shifting. So it created some challenges. That's not to say we can't look at it again. But I don't want anyone to think that we've never talked about it or discussed it, because we did. And the administrators took a long ti... You know, spent a lot of time looking at busing, looking at family impact. We got actually a lot of feedback from parents, saying that they don't want... They didn't want their elementary kids... Siblings going to different schools. So... So that is something that I think we're going to have to continue to look at, but it is a little more complicated than it might look on the surface. The other thing I just wanted to throw out, which... Which I think... I don't know if it's on our agenda, on our next agenda, is about tuition. And I think the idea... I commend the people in Bridgewater for working hard and looking at the tuition of the surrounding schools, and trying to figure out what would make them competitive. And I would like to support them in lowering the tuition to become competitive or compatible with the others. The only thing is, I think that works okay when it is a couple of families here and there paying tuition. If all of a sudden, we're talking about forty students from Danbury, that's sort of a different category. I think of that more in terms of, for example, our Sherman students have a negotiated rate that's paid by the town. Because the actual cost of educating a student is much greater than the tuition that we're charging these families. The only reason it makes sense to do it is because we have room in a classroom. So it doesn't cost us anything extra to have them there, so that nominal tuition, which does not really cover their actual costs, helps. So that's why we do that for families that are individually coming into spaces. If we were to, all of a sudden, have a... An agreement with a town, which I think is a great idea, we just have to be careful and think about, would we be hiring staff to do that? I don't think we could, in good conscience, charge five thousand dollars tuition in a school where, you know, our per pupil cost is closer to thirty thousand. So we'd have to just be... We'd have to think about the... You know, how that would work, and how we would negotiate that as a... As a large program versus an individual program. So... But I... So hopefully, we'll be able to talk about the tuition, once we've finished with the budget.
Peter?
Let me just back up. It seems to me that all of these questions, points that are being raised by board members, should be done during a budgetary process, during the course of the year, when the budget is being put together. We're at the end of that process. This is... The process is over. Every one of the questions that Michael, and Alan, and Greg are asking, and Michelle, to me, you do that during the budgetary process, when the... When Valerie sits down and holds these meetings, the superintendent, staff members, et cetera, et cetera. We're at the climax. We're at the end. I mean, it seems to me redundant to do all of these things. I mean, I really have a problem with it. I mean, we're here at the last minute. People should have looked at this budget, been involved in the process, which is why I said we shouldn't be having budget meetings during the day. Everything should be done committees at night, or between six and seven, five and seven, whatever. And I don't see any reason to sit through all of this. That's how I feel about this whole process. It's not proper. It's not the way you do business. We're sitting here as a committee now, deciding every line item in the budget, if we so choose. That's basically what we're doing. "Well, I put a motion on the floor to reduce item 5, 6, 12, 7, 8 by this amount and that amount." I used to go through that in the past. We'd sit here for three or four hours, going through budgets like this in the eighties. And to me, I think it's not the way you do business. So I'm expressing my opinion tonight.
All right.
If I could just add, before Alan, that we invited boards of finance selectmen. Alan, we really have invited boards of selectmen. No, I'm just adding to this information, because I think it's important for the board to know that we have tried to invite townspeople to all of the budget process meetings, all these workshops, and no one shows up. So this is not... I don't know what we can do. I truly do not. We've tried to be as open as we can, and we have invited townspeople to come and be part of this. Alan, you have a comment?
Alan?
Yeah, I just... I think what you're talking about, Michelle, is that, you know, obviously, it's a separate thing. When you're dealing with forty kids or something, you're dealing with a district. That's a whole negotiation that's separate. But then also, this per pupil thing. You know, at five thousand, or fifty-five hundred per child, you know, that's probably more than I pay for my kids every year. Because you have... You're talking about per pupil costs. You're talking about what someone pays into the school system for their kids. And my property taxes... I mean, let's say I had a house that I spent ten thousand in property taxes to, and like, two thousand went to the town, and eight thousand went to the school budget. And I had eight kids. I get to pay one thousand dollars per kid. So somebody paying fifty-five hundred, that's a deal. Nobody's paying thirty thousand a kid. So that's what any taxpayer who has a problem with this ability to make classes socially viable needs to be educated about. And I think that's a good way to look at it, is that... And we go through this all the time. We keep talking about per pupil costs. But it really... Per pupil costs for everyone go down, the more pupils you add to the system, especially if they're coming with money, which is a nice thing. But one of the other issues that we talked about is the moving kids around. And I think... And that's what I was going to say before, when I was talking on the wrong item number, is that my problem with this is... And as I've said this before, is the process in this. Is that we had, if this was unconscionable, if this was a problem... And as I said, I fully recognize the difficulty of having a teacher for four kids. If you're looking at it as four kids separately, with that teacher in a vacuum all day long, which I don't believe happens. But regardless, if that was... You know, when you asked the question, and that's what I looked up. Because we... And the last time we covered this, two weeks ago, or a week ago, in this room, we said, "Oh, we should have... We should have been on top of this." And you were, Michelle. You asked. You asked Teresa, "What about 3, 4?" And she answered. And you said, "Okay." Because her answer was that it's harder, we need more time. We need to... We're going to start next year with an informal testing of possibilities. And then, we'll see where that goes, as far as actually, you know, changing the class structures. And that seemed to be okay with us, with the superintendent, with everybody. And then, all of a sudden, comes this... You know, regardless of whether budget meetings are open for everybody, I don't get messages saying we're having a facilities meeting on booth teachers, or science teachers, or athletic equipment costs. I don't get those. So if they are public, they need to be publicized, I guess, or become forum events. So then, we have the situation wherein, in the beginning of March, we learn that there is a cut necessitated by population, which means everybody has to speed up to make this happen. And what this does is this causes everybody, you know, to worry that this is actually going to not work out. We hope it will, but we worry that it won't. Whereas when you have a plan, you plan first and say, "Here's our plan. How about it? Good, that plan looks like it'll work. Okay, let's cut somebody." But the idea that, "Oh, look, we only have four kids. Look at the parity. Look at the other schools. We want to cut this now," makes it seem as if the danger of not knowing, and the fact that this will make the school less attractive and less viable as it goes, because people aren't sure, means that maybe next year, the population will be down lower, and we can go, "Hey, let's cut some more." Because then, we can say to people who are concerned about the fact that we have a reduced population, that we are actually reducing the budget. Because every time the population goes down, look, we can reduce the budget. How? By reducing staff. But at some point, you need to make sure that you actually have viable schools that are attractive, so the population might have a chance of coming back up again, based on all the marketing that you're trying to do. So my question is, aside from the fact that siblings would be separate, which, you know, by the time a sibling is in... You have siblings who are in fourth grade, and in ninth grade, or fourth grade, and in sixth grade, or fifth grade and sixth grade, or third grade and seventh grade... You know, they are separate buildings at some point. Other than that, which we also have done in the past, if we have... If we're concerned about twenty-one kids in a... In the third and fourth grades, and twenty kids... Twenty-one, 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 and third, fourth, and fifth in WPS, why don't we just send seven kids from each class to Burnham for fourth, seventh, and eighth? These kids now have much smaller classes, taking the strain off of their teachers, giving them more individual attention, and there is no change in the... You know, and also, taking the stress off of the staff at Burnham that has to rewrite curriculum in three months, and change all of their curricular structures, and cross their fingers that it'll all work out in time. When... And then, on top of that, you don't change the structure of the school to anybody who thinks they might want to move there, who go, "What's the school like? Oh, look, there's a school with some kids in the classes. Great, normal classes." So I'm not sure why that opportunity wasn't investigated, and that this kind of process wasn't exposed beforehand. Do we do 3, 5? Do we send kids from WPS? Since both are obviously possible. Why it's a very hush-hush process until March, where we go, "Well, we didn't really have a process. We have a demand, and now we have to have a process." It just makes me think that we are perpetuating... If we okay this, we are perpetuating a sense of, "Oh, look." As one of the speakers said, "A family's just put their house on the market. Two kids are going to leave Burnham." From what she said, I was... I guess we can ask if she's still here. I don't think she is. She's not. One isn't even in the system yet. So that must mean there's a kid who's like, let's say, first grade, and a kid who's in pre-K. That means we are knocking two more out of Burnham, so that at some point, we're going to have this conversation again, because of the people who leave, based on what we do haphazardly, as opposed to the way we did the K-2, not haphazardly. We're going to lose more kids. So that by next year, we're going to have, "Oh, my gosh." Or at some point, we're going to have, "Oh, look, we have 1, 2, 4, 3, 11..." You know, "All these kids, we have a total of four kids in all of Burnham. Let's close the school." And that would mean, "Hey, great, a savings," but then, all the repercussions of that. So it seems like we're always at the point of reacting to attrition, and then causing attrition, as opposed to stabilizing. And that is why I would vote against, for the same reason also that Greg said, vote against taking this teacher out of the budget. Because what if this plan doesn't work out? We will need that teacher to go through the process that Teresa told you was necessary, which is taking longer to do this. And if that wasn't satisfactory in December, we would have had three more months to do it then.
Valerie?
Well, this is what I know. We prefer to have our own children go to our own town schools. And we're bending over backwards to let the Bridgewater children go to Burnham. That's their right. That's what I think is appropriate for Burnham parents, for the whole town of Bridgewater. And we're doing everything we can to help in that endeavor. That is a fact. That's a given, hometown. The other thing we know is, for one reason or another, Burnham's always been the smaller of the three schools, and now is critically smaller. And we have tried to do something to increase enrollment, and we will continue to. I am definitely in favor of a special tuition plan. So far, though, with the efforts of the selectmen and the PTO to give assistance to decrease a seventy-five-hundred-dollar-a-year tuition down to a realm of about five thousand, five... Fifty-five-hundred, still no takers. But we must still pursue that. I'm all in favor of the sign. We definitely want to get out there even more aggressively. This is something that's just not happened in the last year. This is something, an ongoing issue for the last twenty years. But we have these realities. Hometown, diminished population. We also have a situation where we... We really have to be mindful of our taxpayers. And we can't continue to have an educational system that allows three or four kids per class. That much we know as well. The other thing we know is the parity issue with the other two schools. Comment was made about, "Well, we've got six kids in the kindergarten at Booth." That's true. However, we have fifteen in the first grade. The combo is not going to work, at least now. But everyone should be on notice. And particularly, since we have one section per grade at WPS for the first time in its long history. But this is going to have to happen and continue. And we have to face it. And this is not something we're... We keep saying we need more time, more time, more time. We are wasting taxpayer dollars. We are not enhancing the education of our children. We definitely need to put every effort into encouraging parents of our surrounding towns to send kids to us. We will do that. We really must do that. But for now, to say, "We need more time," this was inevitable, this was known. That we will go forward in the future. Everyone should be on notice, that we have to do this for the sake of the region and the taxpayers, and for the kids. I trust Kathy. And shame on us, not to trust our educators, to know how to use their resources appropriately. We've had a presentation on this. We've had conversation about it. We know this could really be a very sterling way to do business, à la Montessori. And if we have a reversal of population, we will adjust. Could this be an anomaly for the next couple of years? Perhaps, let's hope. We will work very hard so we can make it an anomaly that we have more kids in. But for now, I trust Kathy, and I respect the taxpayers.
Jen?
Michael?
Whichever.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of the points that you made. First of all, this is not a question of trust, trusting our administrators, trusting Kathy Colletti specifically. I think if we had concerns as a board, we would have brought them up, probably privately with Dr. Cosentino. That's not the issue here. We're trying to deal with a communications fiasco. That's what we're trying to deal with. And now, as a board, we, because of the lack of communication, the lack of planning, we're being put in a very uncomfortable position. One of the other statements that you made was, "For some reason, these problems at Burnham seem to be coming up continually at Burnham. I don't know why." The answer is very simple. Look at the town populations of the three towns. Bridgewater is the smallest of the three towns. It's no wonder that Burnham is going to be affected with a declining population that is affecting all three towns. And we're going to feel it first. is affecting all three towns, and we're going to feel it first. But as you do point out, right on the heels, we have two other elementary schools that are going to have the same issue. Finally, the, another point that you made is that we seem to be bending over backwards for Burnham and for Bridgewater students. No, we're not. We're, we're doing what we have a legal responsibility to do. What the court system has already said is that we need three viable elementary schools in all three towns. That's a, that's a given.
I agree.
What is also a given is that the communication has been lacking.
Not.
I do not think that parents have been informed, and I certainly know that the board has not been informed enough to make this kind of a drastic change in the space of what seems to be only a few months. To be looking at changing an entire elementary school to the extent that we're looking at, especially when we've done that just recently at the K-2 level, seems rushed. And for that reason, I'm, I'm in opposition to that cut.
All right, anyone else?
Jennifer.
Jen?
So I just want clarification. Alan, so when you're saying seven students from WPS, you're saying the third grade, is that right? I'm just, I'm just yes or no, like, I'm just trying to get a picture. You're saying, so you're saying seven from Booth and seven from WPS?
There's three grades that are over 20.
Right. So you're saying seven from each grade from WPS. So then, I'm just talking this out, so work with me here. So you're saying that, and then how would we get those seven from each grade to go to Burnham? We would tell them, or we would ask them? So, what?
Alan, you need to put your mic on, speak up.
So we would tell them, so we wouldn't ask them?
I don't think, according to our...
We could tell them.
We could tell them.
We could.
We could ask them, but if they, if we didn't get seven willing, then we could tell them.
We could tell them.
The board has the power to do that. As long as you don't close the grade, we can do that.
We can do that. And we would provide transportation.
Right.
Is that right, Jen?
I believe, I assume so, sure, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Rebecca?
So because I work during the day, I rely on these meetings to keep me informed. And when, you know, we talk about trusting our administrators, I do trust our administrators. So when we had the meeting in December, it was very clear to me what was going on at Burnham. They had done an outstanding job of working with our consultant and with the parents to get this K-2 configuration in place for next year. They were very clear about it. They were very clear that they wanted to make it successful. That was a big focus. And they were also clear on how they wanted to manage the third grade next year. I wasn't vague about it, I felt comfortable with it. I had no expectation that we were going to be cutting a teacher. It sounded to me like they were going to work on slow integration in order to get to the concept of whatever the next level would be, whether it's 3-5 or whatever, they didn't go too far into it. So when we talk about trusting our administrators, that's what I trusted. I trusted that they had done the work, and I was very comfortable with it, and I wasn't expecting anything different. I also wasn't expecting us to go from a school that right now has a K-1 blend, and then a 2, 3, 4, 5, to go to a K-2 and a 3-5. So when we talk about, and we throw words like unconscionable around, it is unconscionable to me that we take a primary school and we completely change what it looks like and have no expectation that there would not be a negative impact. I think that that is irresponsible, I think it's unreliable. When we talk about doing the hard work, I'm pretty sure that's what we've been doing. And yeah, maybe it takes a little longer than we like it to, but that's why we have the awesome schools that we do. Because we don't jump in and make rash changes, we do the homework and we do it correctly. And I have great faith in Kathy. And that doesn't mean that I want to put her feet to the fire and set her up for failure, and set our students up for failure.
Peter?
I just want to respond to Alan's suggestion. Four years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, the town of Washington offered Bridgewater and Roxbury a way to resolve all these issues, by putting everybody under one roof. You refused. Roxbury refused. You are suffering right now from the residual effects of a bad decision. And you want me to solve it? Not a chance. Not a chance. You need to change, not me. And you have to come to that conclusion.
Anyone else? We're on the motion to Greg's motion. Greg, I just want to be clear on your motion is to add the one FTE in Burnham, is that right? Add it back?
That's correct. That's the correct, that's the motion.
Greg?
Look, anyone who, anyone who sat down to construct a method for running a school system on a statewide basis, or constructing a method for governing yourselves, would not choose the one we have. But we're stuck with the one we have. And we have to live with the one we have. And we have to manage expectations. And we know, I mean, I was one of the people who said, back at the time when we were discussing consolidation, that the net effect of not approving it is that, that first Burnham and then possibly Booth would become one-room schoolhouses. And that's the direction we were heading in, because the population was shrinking at such a rapid rate. And indeed, that's exactly what's happening. And it's, it's no surprise. It's probably not even that much of a surprise that the third grade, standing out there as a three, now four, child grade, has been ripe for having to have something done to it. But the problem is, is that we're here to make sure that, that the children have the best education possible. And, but part of that is also managing the expectations of their parents, managing the expectations of the system. And I think where we dropped the ball is we dropped the ball when we didn't make a priority for dealing with that third grade class earlier in the process. And, and perhaps we, and perhaps the district should have made clear to every parent in there, that you understand that, you know, we're, we're moving to a K-2, but we're going to have to do something with the third grade, too. And we, we've tried a bunch of options, and they don't seem to be working. But I think that, I think the problem is, is that we have not managed expectations well, and we're asking our administration, we're asking our building leaders to go into a situation in which they're going to, number one, be going to a K-2 system in the same year that they're going to be going to a 3-5, or a 3, 4 plus 5, or however it works, however we're planning to do it. And I think that's asking a lot, and I think it's asking a lot of the parents that are involved with it. And as much as I do not want to, want to have a teacher for three kids, I'd rather have a teacher for three kids than be missing a teacher that we need for three kids. Because it may be that that may be the only way it works when all is said and done, and we may, may or may not be able to get there. But we need to manage people's expectations, and we need to lead them in that direction. And we didn't do it here. And as a result of that, I think we're going to have to live with a bad situation for just a little bit longer. And maybe we will get there sometime, by the beginning of next year. But I, I don't think we can guarantee we can get there, and to preserve our options, I think we would be better off adding that FTE in. This is not because I'm thrilled with the prospect of having a teacher for three students, or four students. It's, it's because I'm, I'm not thrilled with the prospect of having fewer options. And I want to, because when push comes to shove, and I don't care, Pete, if it's, if we had 100 workshops, if we get to the time when it's time to vote on the budget, and I think that it's not in the best interest of the children in the district, I'm going to open up my mouth and talk about it. I'm not shy, never been shy, but I'm never going to drop the ball. I don't care how badly the school board or the administration maybe doesn't consider something, but I'm always going to be an advocate for those kids, because that's why I was elected to this board, and that's under state law, whom I'm elected to serve. You know, it comes as a shock to a lot of people when they find out the Board of Education isn't here for the taxpayers. Obviously, we, we pay attention to that, because we'd be, wouldn't be here long if we didn't. But we're here to service the needs of these children, to get them a quality education. And I think we do it reasonably efficiently from an economic standpoint. And we're arguing over about $80,000, and, and I don't want to increase that $80,000, because a nice chunk of it's going to go to Roxbury. But on the other hand, I want to make sure that we do the right job by these kids, because that's why we're here.
Michelle?
So I support the, the recommendation as it is, and I, and I, I don't do that lightly, and I, it's a challenge. I don't think, it's a difficult, it's a difficult situation that we're in. But I think, and there are many, many, many things that need to be weighed. I think the board was very clear last year's budget cycle, that we would not have a teacher in that third grade classroom. We said that. We said, you know, we left it up to the administration to figure out how they wanted to, to deal with that classroom. We kind of figured a 2, 3 would be what they came back with, and they, and they didn't. That's, that's fine. And, and I thought the way the K-2 program was laid out was, was wonderful, it was beautiful, very well researched and, and thought out. And it's put the board in a really challenging position by not addressing that third grade class. So now, so here we are. But here's what I think. I, I do recognize the challenge of a 3-5. There are five months, not three months, left to put it together. We do have administrators who work over the summer, not all the teachers do, but, and they can choose, we have summer curriculum work in the budget, if they choose to, to do that, they can work on that. We have teachers who have volunteered to do it. I think the 3-5, while it seems to be a, a large cultural change to the building, it actually makes sense, the way Kathy said, staff-wise, by, by having the two people working together. I know in Warren, when they did this, the superintendent took the, they had the building, superintendent said, here, you have four teachers where you used to have, I don't remember, six, seven, eight, and put them wherever you want. And they did it. They did it. And it was, you know, it was a little uncomfortable at first, but they, they love it. And what I do know is that most parents look at those classes, I, I really, I, 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 I hear what Bridgewater is saying about not wanting to hurt the prospects of prospective parents coming in. But I, I, a classroom of four students is appealing to a very small number of people. That is a, like I keep saying, like a homeschool situation. If it was so appealing, people would be moving there. We would have people from Washington and Roxbury driving their kids over there, but they're not, because they like the socialization. A classroom of 18, 19, 20 students at that age is, is much more typical, that is what parents are looking for. Parents in Washington often send their kids to Montessori because they thought we were too small. Then they liked the, having the multiple grades, even though they have the same number of students the same age, because they had multiple classrooms running multiple ages, the peer group was that much larger. So, so I, I really think it's all in the way you market the, the program. I, I think it's very difficult to get parents to move into a school where you're going to be in a class with five students, or four students, and they're all boys, or they're, you know, you're, and you're the only girl, or vice versa, whatever the, the demographics are. So I, I, I think, I think really that's, it's all in how you, you spin that. And so I, I think having a, a healthy classroom that looks like a size that people are used to, plus I feel that the transition for those students coming up to the middle school will be that much easier if they have a classroom that reflects a size more of what they will have up here. Because already, I, it's, it's a difficult transition coming from such a small school up here. I've, I've heard that, that, you know, the lunch, the cafeteria seems overwhelming to those students. So I, I think that it makes sense there. I, I have full confidence that the staff will be able to meet the needs of those students educationally. I do wish they maybe had a little more time to plan for that. I do wish that the parents felt more prepared for that. But we do have five months to do that. So I, I, it's not a decision I make lightly, and I understand that some of you will disagree with that, and I'm, I'm okay with that. But I, I feel that, we said last year, we wouldn't be putting a teacher in that classroom. We, we were very clear about that. So I, yes, we've been put in a very uncomfortable situation.
Lisa?
She answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Steph?
Can I ask a question to whoever might be best able to answer what the process would look like if we asked parents to transfer, I guess from Washington was the question, to Burnham, if they decided not to do that? And then we decided we needed to tell them to do that? What kind of timeframe are we looking at? Like, when do they have to decide? When is registration? Is that feasible? Like, do we have time to tell someone to do that?
What I will tell you is that every, well, last year, we sent a letter home to all parents, letting them know of the option, that you can go to any school if there's room and superintendent approves. And the principals, especially in WPS, and Booth Free, when new families come in, will say, you can go to the three schools, they, we talk about how Burnham has smaller classes. So that's always an option. It's very difficult, it would be very difficult to, to move kids if parents didn't, and kids opt into that. Especially when you're in, you know, the third, fourth, and fifth grade, you've already done three years in that building. And that's one of the reasons why we asked the three students at Burnham if they wanted to go to Booth Free, and when they told Mrs. Colletti, no, we dropped that option, because it would be very difficult to force people. You'd probably, I guess, have to have a lottery and pick, you know, it would be very disruptive, and, and that would have a really bad, put a, put a, put a bad stain on the region for incoming families to know that, you know, a lot of times, people move in to a, a, a school district because of the school. And so, you know, when you tell people, just so you know, we have a lottery, and, you know, every year, some kids are just moved, and you don't have a choice, that would not be a, a, a positive. I think it would cause a lot of angst.
And what kind of timeline would you say? If we decide, if we were going to do a lottery, you would do it at the beginning of the year?
I don't, um...
I mean, could it change, like, I mean, there's lots of...
I guess you really couldn't do it until, probably around budget time, because you, you want to have your numbers at least solidified. You know, kids come in and out, we do have some mobility, not as much as other places. But I don't know the best time to do it. But it would not be pretty, that, that I know.
And you think we would have the time left in this school year to do that?
Oh, no. I do not. I, I do not, I, I don't recommend that. That is not coming from my office. I don't think it's a good idea to, certainly, we can, again, offer if there are anybody else. I mean, I could send a letter out again tomorrow. We did that last year, and there was, no one came from the two schools that we wanted some movement in. The problem, and Bob and I have looked at this a little bit, just so you know, and hopefully one day, we'll get to it with a long-range plan, because that's where you should really kind of think of some of these things. But most of the Washington kids do not live close to Booth, to Burnham. They live close to Booth. So basically, when you, because most of the Washington kids live like where the depot is, and, and north. So basically, if you were going to realign the district, you would have to move the Washington kids to Booth, and then the Booth kids to Burnham. Which is not, you can't do that overnight, you know, and people have to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Michael? I thought I was running this.
I don't know, you asked me to. If you're taking it away, that's fine with me.
Just, just a point of clarification. That is doable, what we're talking about. I understand that from Dr. Cosentino's perspective, it can be difficult for an administrator to look at something called redistricting, but it's done all the time. I grew up in Stanford, and I was redistricted to two different schools during the time that I was growing up. My parents never once said, let's move.
That's in the same town, is very different, Mike.
Right, but it's still doable. We're talking about a region that, we have three towns that are joined together. I think if we keep hearing the refrain that we need to think as a region, we need to think as a region.
Jen?
Jen?
So I have a couple of things that I wanna say. I, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Michael, but I also think that in our district, nothing seems to feel really easy.
Jen, you have to speak up. I can't hear you.
Nothing seems to feel easy in our region. So when you talk about Stanford moving around, we can't even seem to figure things out easy in our own district. So I imagine a lot of waves would happen. I'm assuming that the reason why you didn't tell the third graders to go to Booth was because we needed to keep a third grade in Burnham. Is that correct? I'm, I'm asking Pat.
Yes, that was the, our, our, I not only got the information from the attorney, I spoke to the attorney and he said, the only way they can go to Booth is if they volunteer.
If they volunteer.
And they did not.
And they did not.
Two of, the last time that I spoke to Kathy about it, two of the three did not wanna go to Booth.
Right.
So therefore.
So we couldn't tell them that they're going to Booth, the way that we would tell WPS students that they would be going to Burnham.
Couldn't tell them to go because we can't close the third grade.
I understand. That's what I'm asking.
I'm just making a.
Okay. So I just wanna say a few things that I too struggle with this. I remember very clearly what I said last year. I know that we looked, not me, but the region looked at the K through two configuration and, and got everybody on board with that. And last week I was struggling because I'm going, how did I let this slide through my fingers? So I do take responsibility for my, for not asking and probing more about that. However, I do think that we need to be fiscally and educationally responsible. I think that even, I know that last week we talked about doing the third and fourth grade together and keeping the fifth grade separate. Kathy came tonight and said something different, which I agree with Michelle, made me rethink that and I appreciate it. And so if the three through five is gonna work better and Kathy suggests that, then I support Kathy. I'm surprised that we're all surprised, again, the same way that we were last year, that we need more time. I think we underestimate our own teachers. I think that they will have time. I have faith in Kathy and I have faith in the educators in our region. And I think that we should continue to explore our options as we move forward. And hopefully, like Valerie said, maybe we won't have to worry about this in the next couple of years. But I also think we need to be mindful that the town do their job and let us do ours. I applaud Bridgewater for, for marketing, so to speak. I don't think we need to include it as a line item in our budget. That's just my two cents. And I think we need to remember what's best for the students, not what's best for the town always. I think that needs to be the town's responsibility. And I think that we need to be mindful about that. I don't think that I need to take that on too, as I already struggle with how we need to educate the students.
Anthony?
I guess to, to beat the dead horse, I can't believe it's a year and it's Groundhog Day again. And we say, you know, these are problems we saw coming. I'll make a prediction, we're gonna have a problem next year in fourth grade. And I'll go out on a limb and say, in fifth, we're gonna have another problem. Just, just throwing it out there. So the fact that we're sitting here between a rock and a hard place, I could think of a few other perhaps metaphors that might be more appropriate because this is terrible. I mean, what we're contemplating here and sort of like, well, it could be this, it could be that, we're throwing around comparisons, for example, to Montessori. Just, just for the record, Montessori does pre-K, K, one, two, three, yeah, one, two, three, four, five. So what we're modeling here doesn't fit the Montessori method. And I'm not suggesting that Montessori is the right method, but the fact that we're saying, well, we'll, we have to vote on a budget and then go figure it out. I've kind of heard this story once, once before. It, it's, it's, we got our backs up against the wall and a decision needs to be made and it's, I think, the whole situation could have been avoided. And now we don't know what to do. I don't think anybody's around this table, and if you do, tell me, supporting that rationally that we should have one teacher for three kids. Right? Looking around, I don't see any heads. So I don't think, but in the end, we're like, Greg, I appreciate you wanna hedge. And I don't, I don't disagree with, with the notion of saying, hey, what if, as we're figuring it out, we realize, hey, I need point four, to, to go back to the music teacher, the point four of a something to make this formula work? Where are we gonna get the budget? So I don't know if it's keeping the head in there or just saying, approve the budget that's been submitted by the administration. And if we, we're told or it's found out that we need point four, then take it out of something else and we suffer those consequences, whatever they may be, due to sort of lack of planning, and just drive on. So my question is, if we do need another FTE of whatever flavor, is there anything that would preclude us from taking it out of a different end of the budget? I think it's a yes, no, but maybe not.
Well, I think Bob.
I'm gonna say no. I mean, if we ever got to the point where we needed a classroom teacher, we would have to rearrange our staff and probably move an interventionist out of intervention and become a classroom teacher.
So seriously, you can't take the budget out of like facilities or, or.
Well, that could happen also.
Professional services and move it over there to, I mean.
Well, that could happen also, but off the top of my head right now, that would be something that I might have to possibly do.
I'm just.
But that would be honestly, a great problem to have, because that means we're getting an influx of kids.
No.
No, it's not what I'm saying.
Yes?
No, I'm, Greg wants to keep one FTE as a hedge in case we need that FTE, as it turns out, to teach the class. And then if we don't need the FTE, then we've got one FTE's worth of budget that's surplus that we're gonna do something else with. So I think it's fungible in that we have, we have a budget at a bottom line that we can, we can move the money around to whatever line item we need. That, that's just a question on the table. I'm not suggesting anything, but just want clarity on how much flexibility do we have or, or not inside moving, moving monies around in the budget.
Bob can answer that.
You can certainly do that. We've had to do that in the past when we've found special needs student, for example, that showed up and we had to put her to freeze one year. I mean, things can be done, but we're at the point right now where I can't tell you where it would be, because we haven't even got a budget on the table, let alone what happens as we roll it out. When it rolls out, things do change.
If I may, the motion on the floor is not to increase the budget by eighty-two thousand dollars so we have it for something if we need it. The motion is to put a teacher back in Burnham, a, a full-time teacher. That's the motion. So if that passes, that's what will happen. And then we put the budget to the people.
That's what I heard Greg say. Greg? What, is that the intention of your motion is to put a teacher in there and under no circumstances will a teacher come out?
No, I, I asked that we restore one FTE teacher to the budget. That's an eighty-two thousand dollar increase in the budget, roughly, based on that number. And, and that, and that's what I meant by it. If I might just add, if I might just answer that question that you asked, Anthony. The other question you asked, no. Maybe, maybe you'll be able to find that money somewhere else. But here's the problem. We have cut, 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 cut. There isn't money in facilities to, to back this up and to go there. You can't take stuff that we shoved into the 1% fund and take it out of the 1% fund and hire a teacher. You can't do that. That can only be used for capital expenses. The problem is, we don't have any more running room. And what my fear is, is if we find ourselves in the perfect storm situation we were in the other year, where five special needs kids moved into the district between the budget passing in May and the start of school in August, guess what? That was half a million dollar hole in a twenty million dollar budget. It's two and a half percent hole in the budget. We found that money, but that was before we cut two years in a row. And so the problem you've got is, is gonna be, if, if that perfect storm arrives at the same time when you need to put a teacher in the classroom because you really think you've got an issue, and you don't have any other place to get it from, and something else went out of whack or we had a special repair necessitated by something we didn't foresee, three rooftop, you know, units went and we had to spend three, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars on that, you have five hundred thousand worth of kids, all of a sudden you got a million dollar hole in the budget, now you're gonna talk about an eighty-two thousand dollar teacher? I mean, the time to do it is now. The time to do the responsible thing is now. Look, we, if we had planned better, we wouldn't be in this position. I cannot believe, after what happened last year, as you said, that we are back in the soup again. That is poor planning. That's outrageously poor planning. It's, it's, it borders on, 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 I can't believe it. And yet here we are. So the question is what to do about it responsibly? What to do to keep from sundering something else? And I can tell you right now, if anybody thinks that, if anybody thought that consolidation was difficult and anyone thinks that this issue is difficult, wait till you talk about redistricting. Because first of all, I can tell you right now, a, a, anyone that doesn't read the paper tomorrow is not gonna have an idea that redistricting is even a possibility here. And I can tell you, I lived in an area, I grew up in an area where they redistricted regularly and it was always wrenching. When you moved from high school A to high school B, it was wrenching. When you move, they didn't usually move elementary kids, but the point is, is that when you moved people to make changes in district boundaries, it was always a bit wrenching. And this is the reason why, from day one, I was a supporter of a single elementary school for the entire district. In fact, a single school for the entire district, because I thought it was the one way we could control population shifts. But we're off of that. We're done. That's passed. So right now, what do we do for next year? Do we put the money in to keep the teacher here, to make a decision that hopefully by the start of school, we will have made a decision one way or another? Either that we still need that teacher to teach that, those four kids, or we've come up with a, we've, we've come up with a public buy-in and we've come up with a way to do and we've got buy-in on it for a three, four, five, or a three, four and a five. One of those two things will happen and you can always make adjustments then and save money. You don't have to spend money. But if you don't have that in the budget now, you do not have the option of saying, we're just gonna leave the status quo ante. You'll, you'll take that option off the table, which means that you're gonna then have to find it somewhere else if you decide to, to do that. And guess what? I don't think there's a way to find it. I've been crying all night about the fact that we slimmed this budget down. Every time someone asks a question, yes, we slimmed it down. There's no fat in this budget. It's gonna be hard to find that stuff. It means you're gonna have to take programs off the table and you're gonna have to stop doing programs. And that impacts kids too. So what I'm saying is, let's be, do the sensible thing and make sure we have a program neutral budget in place. And if it, look, I mean, it may go to the, it may go to the electorate and get turned down. And then you may have to make the hard decision on this teacher at that point. But I think the time to, to do it is now and not later. Greg, can I ask you? Are you, are you suggesting that if your motion passes, that the superintendent could assign four full-time teachers to Burnham? Just have eighty-two extra grand in the budget for contingencies? I'm putting. Is that a possibility under your scenario? Yes. Okay. That's where we're going. I've never, in the years that I've been on the board, I've never seen us plan for contingencies by just throwing in eighty thousand dollars extra. Valerie?
Neither have I. I, I think, you know, the, the world can end tomorrow, the roof can blow off. I mean, there are all sorts of calamities that can happen, but our job here is to take the very best that we can to establish a good and reasonable budget. And indeed, we return, Anthony, we return money to our three towns. As far as I know, each year, money can be found. If for some reason this doesn't work, which I can't imagine because I trust Kathy, then indeed, we could get another teacher or another interventionist in that classroom. But I do believe she has a unique situation of two really good teachers who wanna work together and are excited about this new possibility.
All right.
And I, what?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't know. I thought.
What? Greg can go on, but I can't?
I didn't, I thought you were finished. I'm sorry.
Well, I am not. We've gone from seven hundred and forty kids to seven hundred and thirteen kids projected. I mean, we really do have to, to weigh our budget according to our population. And we have contingency money. Each, we know these lines are there that can provide us extra money if we need to. We've done it once again with a real calamitous special ed situation, which is far more front and center than hiring or not hiring a teacher. I'm talking to Greg and Alan and I'll probably wait.
Oh, no, it's just you're not allowed to say that we have contingency in our school budget. I just said.
Right, right. But I, all I'm saying is, I'm addressing Anthony's issue, is that we return money routinely to the three member towns and there is money in the budget if there's some unforeseen calamity of any sort. And to keep building up what I think is a well-crafted budget just for the heck of it, is not a proper use of taxpayer dollars. And I represent taxpayers as well as children. And I've done that for twenty years. And the point is, I think we have a, a good suggestion here. I think, as Anthony said, it's unconscionable to have a teacher for three or four kids. It doesn't make sense. And, and Alan, stop talking. I, I am deadly silent here when you're talking. I am deadly silent when you are talking.
Come on. Alan, stop, just stop commenting while other people are talking, please. It'll be your turn if you need to. Go ahead, Valerie.
So I implore you to, to, to trust our administrators to do the right thing. And with any luck, we can help Bridgewater build this population up as we have for twenty years and here we are. It's very important to keep a hometown school. We could, this board right now, could say, send those four kids to, to Booth or to Burnham. We could do that, but we do not wanna do that. We respect the hometown school. And this is the way to save a hometown school in our near term. And I respect Kathy and Pat to do the right thing here.
Peter?
I moved the question. Whatever the question is, I moved it.
All right. There's a motion to move the question. Before, I ask for a second. Is there a need for it? Is there anything else, anybody who wants to say anything else? Is Rebecca the only one? Because otherwise I'm gonna ask for a second on the motion. All right? It's been moved and seconded. There's no discussion. All those in favor of moving the question, raise your hand. Means we stopped discussion. All right. Any opposed? Any abstain? The opposed, raise your hands. Any abstain? Even though I voted against it, I hope we're almost done. Rebecca? We've, we've heard everything.
I'm not usually verbose, but I'm gonna exercise my rights tonight. So I understand that Washington isn't any more interested in their children being forced to go somewhere that they, other than Washington, than Bridgewater is. And I find it interesting because people on this board seemed more than willing to put those three or four children in Roxbury if they'd had the authority to do it. But they don't. What I would like to say, or throw out there, is it's possible that if we asked children to volunteer, parents would be more willing if we provided transportation, which we would have to do if it was mandated.
All right. Is there anyone else? Alan?
I'll try to be as unverbous as possible. I, as I said, I appreciate the sticky situation here, but I just wanna point out that the arguments for supporting the budget and not adding this FTE money back in are all the arguments, they're the same arguments for, for, for doing so. You say, Michelle, you said you knew you had to fix the third grade last year at this meeting. But then we also knew that in December, when we said that the solution that we were okay with was what we heard. We say that we trust Kathy.
Excuse me, Alan, I have to.
But we also trusted Teresa, we thought, right? And then you say it's all in the way you market the, the program. Well, the problem is, it's very hard to market the program like this. It's better to market if it had been planned first. You say you wish you had more time. Well, we would have had more time if we'd done this in December. The answer to this problem, which was thrown out there and may be possible, as Rebecca says, if we, if it's unfortunate, if we provide transportation, as it was a bad stain on the region for incoming families. This bass ackwards way of doing this third grade situation is a bad stain on the region for incoming families. It would cause a lot of disruption to move kids in WPS. This will cause a lot of disruption. And then finally, no time this year to do it. But there is time to write three new curriculum. What I'm saying is, this could be inevitable, but all. What I'm saying is, this could be inevitable, but all the rationale for it is just as sloppy as the actions that caused us to be here right now.
Alan, I need to respond. Something you keep saying is that, at the presentation in December, it was said that we would like more time to consider the three-five or the three-four, and that the board was okay with that. That's not accurate. If a board member remains silent in the face of somebody saying something, that doesn't mean that they acquiesce. I certainly didn't acquiesce. I asked them why they didn't study the combination of those grades. So, don't keep saying that the board was okay with it, because you can't speak for the whole board. If people remain silent, that doesn't mean that they acquiesce. Is there anything else?
Nothing happened in that meeting.
Michael? Is there anything new, Michael?
Yes. Apparently, we, we're very shy as a board, um, at particular times. Um, and I do want to go back to the point that Michelle started with, um, which is that we, as a board, knew a year ago that this was an issue, would be an issue for the third grade. I'm not disputing that. I, I, my memory isn't that faulty. I do remember that distinctly. I think as a, a community, Bridgewater, and as a school, what we took from that meeting was that we, as a board, are very concerned with Burnham overall, with the low numbers at Burnham. Something needs to be done. So, how did we respond to that concern? I think there were at least two ways, and probably more, that I'm not even thinking of right at this moment, that we did respond to that concern. I think the first was, we made, um, an active effort to plan for a K-two merge. I mean, that is dramatic. I mean, it would have been dramatic as a K-one, to expand it even to a K-two was very dramatic. And we did everything right. I mean, every, all the parents were involved, um, the board was informed of it, um, we had plenty of opportunities to do research, there was plenty of time. And finally, as a town, we've spent more effort and time, uh, on marketing of trying to bring students into Region Twelve than any of the other two towns in the region. And that's been so successful that we've turned around the problem, which originally, if everyone remembers, that, that small cohort started in the kindergarten grade. That's when it first kind of came to our attention. We've turned that around to the, to the tune of, of at least ten students in there. That may sound not very dramatic, but in the space of a few years, to go from a very small number to, um, what for the region right now is a, kind of a comfortable number, i- is fairly dramatic. So, I think it wasn't the idea that, oof, we're done as a community, meaning Bridgewater. It was feeling that we understand there's a concern, and we're trying to respond to it. Now, if that wasn't enough, if maybe our eye was on the K-one-two, when it should have been on three, I wish that had been communicated very clearly and repetitively. You know, as a teacher, I don't say to my class in September, "This is incredibly important. You are going to be graded on this in the final exam," and then never mention it again. I just don't do that. And I don't think we should be doing that either.
All right. Anything else? All right. So, there's a motion on the floor to add one FTE teacher at a cost of eighty-two thousand six hundred eighty-seven dollars to the budget. All those in favor, raise your hand. Have you got them all? All those opposed, raise your hand. Any abstain? Raise your hand. What's the count? All right. The motion fails. Is there any other motions on the budget?
Um, like the motion that we approve the budget as presented.
Which is a point one-two percent increase?
Oh. Um, Valerie, if I... Oh, I'm so sorry.
Val, if I may suggest?
Yep.
Is anyone willing to make a motion to ask the, the administration to, at their discretion, move twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars from the seven forty-three capital facilities into the one percent fund?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry. Michelle? All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that?
Yep. I'd just like to hear the board articulate why, uh, why are we just so hell-bent on a zero-point-zero budget, that we're going to start taking things out of other funds to balance this thing off? And we're talking about one-tenth of one percent increase. We don't want to put a scoreboard on the field, because it's not important. We don't want to do this, because, all because we're trying to get to zero-point-zero. I just want to understand why. Not even one-tenth of a percent increase. So, can somebody please? Because I don't think the board gave a directive to the administration that that's what we need to aim for. So, I just want to understand what's going on.
Peter?
How do you know they're raining for that?
We, we seem to not want to readjust our fire, to keep the analogy going here. When your target moves, you readjust your fire. We keep going to be, we say we're going to make a correction, but no, we're going to go back to zero-point-zero. We're going to do this, we're going to go back to zero-point-zero. So, if it's, if it's not a target, shouldn't, feels like a target, a hard one. So, I'm back to why?
Well, I, I will tell you from my point of view. Um, I've had conversations with, um, some board members, and over the years, it's always been come close to zero because of the fact that we do have a declining enrollment, and that many of the taxpayers feel, and they have, they haven't said it tonight, but they do feel, they want to know why your budget keeps going up and your enrollment keeps going down. This year, I think it's even more important for a couple of reasons. Number one, um, people who are anti-agro-science program, um, basically tell us because of the money, and they're concerned that there's going to be additional costs. And the other piece that's even more pressing is, um, and I think Jay mentioned it tonight, the state budget has not come down the pike. We are expecting cuts. Um, we've already received cuts, more to come. So, um, you know, there is a chance that this may, there may be less revenue coming in from the state in different grants and, and funds. Um, so, I always think that it's prudent to come as close as you can to zero. And we've had this conversation, and I've had this conversation with a couple of you. I never get the other, uh, idea from anybody. No one ever comes to me and says, you know, you know, "Come in around three percent." No one has ever said that to me.
No, no, actually, I did. And we were at a meeting with a few people where we talked about, what do we need programmatically to achieve certain results?
Right. Well, I think...
If that, if the answer to that question, excuse me, if the answer to that question is a three percent budget, then I think that's what this board needs to contemplate and decide, is the increase worth what we're trying to go after? So, at least I'll speak for myself, but there are other board members who are at that meeting, uh, where we put that proposition on the table. And, you know, if we're going for zero, okay, fine, but we're leaving things on the table. Uh, could be leaving things on the table programmatically.
Well, I, I don't know, I, you know, we, it's a long process. Um, there's nothing that was cut that I felt, or reduced from the budget, that I felt was detrimental to any program. Um, as I said, and I said this many times to many people, I try to balance for me. It's the education piece, it's the program piece, but it's also the financial and fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers. To me, it's both, because we have to get a budget that passes. Um, I think over the years, with very low budgets, we have brought in some great programs. Last year, we brought in the STEM staff member, um, at, um, the elementary schools. Um, you know, we have tried to make some, uh, staffing reductions that parents in the community and the board are not into, so we've kind of pushed them aside. Honestly, I, I think, you know, if the population continues the way it does, and the Ag-STEM does not come, come, which I'm hoping it does, um, we're going to have cuts every year. This is just going to be the beginning of, of...
Well, the real, the real, it's, Greg brought it up before, a, a zero budget with a declining i- is really a net increase. Not, not to get into the, the math behind it, but it's truly a net increase, because you're not really proportionately lowering your budget. And unless we start dealing with some of the fixed costs, when you think about this and fixed and variable, you're not going to really proportionally follow that. But, uh, I, I just think that to be able to say our budget is flat, but, um, you know, I, I think if we were two-tenths of a percent higher than when we were less, then I would certainly feel comfortable being able to talk about the budget as effectively being flat. I mean, two-tenths is, is a rounding error. I just feel like, so now, we, we want to go up twenty-three thousand dollars to, so we could still have music in the elementary schools. I mean, that's a good idea. But to then turn around and say, "Well, let's take it out, because we've got this, this, what was supposed to be a fund to use for other, for when things get tight, just so we can keep it at zero-point-zero-zero." I'm just thinking, you know, a good idea perhaps gone a little too extreme. Let's not take the twenty-three thousand out of the facilities, leave it alone. That's really what I was kind of testing on. And just, just want a final comment, is when we did the Ag-STEM program, we kind of said that we weren't, that this program was going to be additive, uh, in, to our schools, in that it wasn't going to, um, because people were asking, "Well, if we were going to overrun on an Ag budget, are we going to take it out of the core budget so we can keep a zero, a zero budget?" And everybody said, "No. If the program winds up costing us some money, the, the, the net increase in the budget would be worth the, the pluses that the program is bringing to us." Okay, fine. But we're already, I think, starting to get, head down that slippery slope, where just the conversations that we've been having around Ag-STEM, the sensitivity to the budget around Ag-STEM is now, and I hope not artificially keeping our budget at zero, uh, because then it's, the Ag-STEM is starting to cost the district, or we're, we're starting to fund Ag-STEM, if you will, um, off, off the, the core program. And I hope that's not where we keep going.
If I may, Anthony, just to answer your question, why, um, for myself, the superintendent came in with a budget that was zero-point-zero. She said it was problematic, programmatically sound. She didn't feel that she was decreasing program for the students. I trust her on that. We've heard from at least one board of selectmen tonight that they approved the budget as proposed by the superintendent. The money is in that fund. Uh, unless somebody can convince me that it really is, is a bad idea to take it out of that fund, to pay for some of these expenses in the seven forty-three fund, I don't have a problem. I think that I...
So, Jim, but so if that's the case, why not just... Why not just drain it? Why don't we take everything that we can out of that line item that's capital, and take it all out of the one percent fund? Because I'm sure we're not doing this just to have a zero-point-zero-zero budget.
Yeah, I am. That's why I'm doing it.
Okay.
Okay. I don't propose to drain that fund. I'm, I'm trying to get this down to zero percent increase. You may disagree, but that's where I'm coming from. Valerie?
Once again, the budget has indeed effectively been increased. We're spending the same amount of money with thirty less kids, and every year, it's the same. So, it is a generous budget, and certainly there are items specifically, items here at seven thirty-four, the capital facilities, that should come out of that one percent fund. So, we're not playing a sleight of hand here. It's a good allocation of our resources. We have the one percent fund for these exact purposes, as we do the lease fund.
All right. Is there anything else? There's a motion on the table to instruct the administration to reduce the seven thirty-four capital's facilities budget by twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Is there any further, just, Michelle?
Um, I've been trying to answer this question myself, and maybe Bob, you can help. I know in our next agenda, we're going to be talking about, um, funding a bunch of things out of the, uh, capital non-recurring fund. Do you know what the current balance of that fund is? Because I, I'm trying to remember. I'm trying to find the last time we had the accounting of that.
Six thirteen, five thirty-two. Six thirteen, five thirty-two. And the one pers, the, uh, the lease? The lease is how much?
Hundred and one thousand...
Hundred and one thousand, five twenty-nine, even.
If you don't.
So, after, what would be left if we move, if we make the motion, if we approve the expenditures that are in our next agenda? I, I know that we're jumping it here, but I think it's pertinent to what Anthony...
Two seventy-six, oh thirty-two, forty.
Two seventy-six?
Oh thirty-two, forty.
Oh thirty-two, forty. Um, I just, I just want to say, Anthony, I, I hear you. And I have been, in my many years on the board, I've been one of the people who often puts money back into the budget, because I feel that if it's educationally necessary, then we need to, it's our job as the board to explain that to the community and, and let them know why we need it. And if they disagree, they'll let us know, and they'll vote it down. I think twenty thousand dollars at this point is symbolic. Um, and so, I'm trying to figure out which, which buys me more, taking, you know, the, the health of the one percent, you know, I, it is our rainy day fund, and I don't want to be bleeding that, because that is there for when something goes wrong mid-year that we didn't budget for. On the other hand, if moving that twenty thousand out of the operating over to the non-recurring crea, gives us the zero, um, percent that is somehow more palatable, what I really don't want is, I don't want the budget to go down. I don't want the vote to go down, because then we're cutting. Not in the history of, of school budgets, I've never known a budget to lose at referendum and come back higher. I've known a budget, a superintendent's request to be, uh, raised at the board level, but if the public votes a budget down, it always comes back smaller. So, so that, so that's the game we're playing here, is the symbolic gesture of that twenty thousand dollars out of the one percent. Philosophically, I completely agree with you. I don't want to bleed that fund either. But if being at zero makes a difference, I don't think the twenty thousand, one, in one place or another, uh, i- is really noticeable. Like you said, it's a rounding error. So, so that's the question we're trying to answer. I don't think anyone has, uh, the complete answer, except for maybe the newspaper headline says, "Budget is an increase of," and if people don't read beyond, they see it's increasing, versus, "Budget is flat." I, I don't know. That's, that's, that's what we're really talking about in my mind.
One of the things that having some capital spending in your budget allows you to do is, if you get an unexpected expense, and let me tell you something, it seems like the average unexpected expense relating to the pool's been about fifty to seventy thousand dollars. It gives you the ability to move other items to the one percent fund, and then take care of that unanticipated maintenance expense. And when you, when you clip it, I think it's irresponsible. Uh, look, the zero percent budget is a, is a game. Uh, it's a game. If the budget is zero percent, or if it's up two-tenths of a percent, as Anthony said, it's a flat budget either way. I mean, if you want to, if you want to play with the rounding error, you can play with the rounding error. But the fact of the matter is, I think it's irresponsible to take another penny out of the facilities budget, which has been gutted this year. Uh, and I only went along with it, um, because, uh, it, it means we're probably going to have to postpone things we'd like to do. But I only went along with it as, as a, as a team player, because I wanted to see, uh, it seemed like there was, there was an important need to, you know, to keep this within reason, especially since Roxbury's going to get hit in a way that Washington got hit last time. And the whole idea was, we were trying to keep the budget within bounds, so it, so as not to lose it, uh, on that. So, I just don't think the twenty thousand dollars is going to make a difference. But if you can take it out of anywhere, uh, at, at least have the, you know, at least have your convictions set. Take it out of program. Cut a program. Uh, do, do something like that, but don't stand and say, "We're just going to do a lousier job of taking care of our facilities," and, and we'll do that as a symbolic effort. Uh, that's not a symbolic effort, that's just, that's doing a lousy job of managing the system.
No one wants to take out a program when we clearly have some capital needs that can be addressed easily, twenty-seven thousand dollars easily in the one percent fund. Can we just proceed on? It is basically statistically a wash. Zero percent does matter... 0% does matter. Not cutting programs matters. Funding capital expenditures to this small amount in the appropriate way matters.
And I just wanna make sure I'm clear, Bob. You said that currently in the 1% fund is $613,532.40. So that would be reduced by $27,500 if the motion is...
Yeah, plus there's a motion here if you...
I understand.
Okay. And there's a motion to put $213,614 back into it.
I understand.
It's almost a half a million dollars.
Correct, when you're all said and done.
Everything's done. It's almost a half a million dollars.
550s, 5...
It's gonna be more than a half a million dollars, isn't it?
It's gonna be 270.
589 less the 23, or 25, 7.
Okay. Is there anything further on the mo, on the motion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The motion is to instruct the administration to reduce the Capital Facilities budget, 734, by $25,700 and have those expenses paid for out of the 1% fund. That's the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, raise your hand. Any abstain, raise your hand.
Five approved, six opposed, and one abstained.
All right, the motion fails. Is there anything else on the budget? Any other motions addressed to the budget? Is there a motion to approve the budget with the .4 increase for the music teacher? Which would be, I've been told, a .12% increase over last year's operating budget. Is that your motion, Peter? Is there a second? Okay, Lisa's seconds. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Any abstain, raise your hand. Okay. Did you get that, Madam Secretary? Mr. Cava's a no vote.
So he's a no vote?
Why don't we do it again? All those in favor, raise your hand of approving the budget. Any opposed, raise your hand. Any abstain, raise your hand. What is the count?
Seven approved, five opposed.
All right, the budget passes. Bob, can you tell us the new budget number? $21,387...
146.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting? Peter moves, is there a second? Michelle, is that...
We have another meeting.
Hold on, Michelle, seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? All those in favor of the motion to adjourn the special meeting, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, I'm very loathe to do this, but we do have another, it's 10:35. Okay. Welcome you to the regular business meeting of the Board of Education, Monday, March 27, 2017. Everyone is still here, so I don't think we need to take attendance again. Everyone is present. Item two, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wants to comment? Seeing no one, consent agenda. Is there anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the education meeting on March 20, 2017? Hearing no one, the consent agenda is approved. Report of the chair, I have no report. Thank you all for your patience tonight. Number five, superintendent's report. Dr. Casatino.
I will speak quickly. I wanna let you know that we had an exciting day Friday up at the state where the Education Committee unanimously, for everyone who was there, 34 people, passed the AgSTEM and moved it out of committee. The vote was open till 7:00 PM, so there may have been some votes by other legislators who weren't at the meeting because they were going back and forth to different committees. That is just the first step and a couple of hurdles. I will let you know what they are. Working on that this week to make sure that we have a plan to move forward. I wanna thank everyone who sent emails. It makes a big difference. I wanna thank everyone who called. And if you have a minute, if you would send a thank you to them for moving it out of committee, I think that's also helpful. Did you have a question? Yeah?
Question. I know it was approved as joint favorable. Does that mean, what's the significance of the joint favorable? Does anybody know? Does that mean it was approved by the Senate Education Committee as well?
No, no, it's, the way they do it there is they have joint meetings, Senate and House, both joint favorable, means that it's being moved to the floor or moved to whatever committee considers it next with the joint Senate and House favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Right. So, yeah, so we're not sure exactly if it's going to the floor or if it's going to appropriations. That's what I need to find out. I wanna remind everybody that this coming Monday, 6:00 PM, we do have a retreat. We're gonna start it out with my mid-year eval. And then I will leave and you will do your board eval, which I gave you a copy of. You also have it, and this is not the best copy, but it's what I had forgotten to print it. But basically, if you can look at this and take some notes for yourself, and then when you come back, hopefully Rebecca and Michelle will lead the charge in, and Anthony and Alan in working on the eval for the board's self-evaluation. So that's Monday at 6:00. And we do have one leave of absence, and that's Kristin D'Souza. And she'll be gone on maternity leave next year and be back by May 1st. And that's my report.
All right, is there any questions for the superintendent? All right, moving on to committee reports. 6-1, Building, Greg, is there any report?
No, the Building Committee has not met since our last meeting last week.
All right, thank you. 6.2, Education Curriculum, Michael or Michelle? Any report?
No, I know that Ally O'Hara's on the agenda for...
A lot of people on the agenda.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's the only one I remember. Who else is on the agenda?
I know I am on the agenda for staff roles and responsibilities. Ally.
We'll talk about the meeting on April 17.
Yes, I think Ramp with Todd and something else, and I don't remember what it was.
I don't remember.
Sorry.
All right. At Advance, 6-3, At Advance, Valerie or Michelle, anything?
I haven't gone.
No.
Nope.
6-4, Facilities, Greg, anything?
We have not, we, the last meeting, the minutes are out there, so we haven't, we haven't met since that last meeting, which was at the time of our last meeting.
All right, 6-5, Finance, Valerie, anything?
Yes, we had our budget workshops on February 16th and February 23rd. And once again, we did invite townspeople, but it was good that Finance Committee helped us review proposals. And of course, we had the administrators defending their requests. And we agreed that the proposed, on the agenda, you'll see the proposed line items to be covered from the 1% in the lease account are appropriate. And we returned checks to the member towns. Off the top of your head, Bob, what were those checks amount? I wanna say, yeah. So we return a lot of money to our member towns, and we're happy to do so.
That's $163,000 total to the three towns. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Valerie?
Nope.
Any questions for Valerie? All right, thank you. Long Range Planning, Alan, anything?
Yeah, we met March 8th for our every-two-month meeting. We examined the results of the Panorama surveys. And at the outset, we have a lot of great conversations that are beginning because of the surveys, the teachers, students, and parents. More to go with that. And we will probably prepare something on the benchmark in the future. The third strategic planning facilitator that I met with was so good that he actually suggested that we do not do strategic planning now, and we met in our committee, and said that we should actually wait and do it next year because with AgSTEM in limbo, we really can't plan strategically for our future because we'll either need to plan for a school with AgSTEM or a school without AgSTEM. We also got further information on International Baccalaureate Program from Teresa, and there will be more study with that. Maybe we will have some conclusive information for the board. If not, at the end of the next Long Range Planning meeting, the one after that.
Thank you. With regard to the surveys, does the committee plan to present the results of that to the board? Or what's your long-term intentions with regard to that?
Yeah, I think so. I think what we're gonna do is a synthesis at the moment. In other words, what's interesting is we really talked about the community survey and that we wanted to make sure we got feedback to the community members because they would feel therefore that their input was actually being listened to and valuable. And I think stemming from that, we will then figure, you know, teachers and students and parents are all kinda captive. They don't have to be nurtured that way. But I think that will give us an example of a way to synthesize the information and present it. And then we can do something like that for the board, for the whole surveys, as we learn how to synthesize information that we need to do at an expedient level, in an expedited nature for the community.
I, okay, I appreciate that. I just, I assume that the board will see it at least at the same time or prior to the community seeing it. Wouldn't wanna have it released to the community without the board seeing it, people.
Well, just the community part of it. I think the board will see it first.
Just consider that. Okay, I appreciate that. All right, negotiations, Greg, anything?
Negotiations, we're about to begin negotiations with the union representing the nurses. Could I just circle back to one thing on facilities?
Yes.
We did, we did finally get the report from the engineer, the outside engineer on the pool, a crack. And there's a corner in the, there's a right-angled corner in the base, not in the basement, but in the service area below the pool. And that corner has a crack in it. It was determined the crack is not structural. The wall is 18 inches thick. It doesn't affect the pool itself. But that, what's gonna happen is eventually that's, that corner is gonna shear off and fall. And we have two choices. We can either wait till it happens and then do whatever we want with it, either replace it, repair it, whatever, or not. Or we can band it. We can attach bands. Don has decided he does not wanna attach bands because to do so would be to start hammering onto the pool. He doesn't wanna create four new problems that we don't know. The good news is, is that the consultants, the engineer said, he's never seen a pool of that age in quite that good a condition. And he's used to pools being poorly maintained. And this one has been very well maintained. And one of the things we're doing within that area is we're trying to get some more air circulation to try to minimize the corrosion from the environment or the chlorine environment that everything's in. So that's another thing that we're doing. So I just wanted to pass that along on the pool. We're gonna keep that thing open if we can, Michelle, so you can swim in the morning.
All right, thank you. And again, on 6-7, negotiations. We are gonna be starting negotiations with the Nurses Union. 6-8, Policies and Bylaws, Michelle, anything?
No, we met last Monday, and we continue to work. We had policies for tonight, but we allowed them to be moved. So you can thank us all for that.
Thank you.
Isn't that nice? So we're, yeah. So we'll just have a backlog later. That's okay.
Item seven, any old business?
Before you leave committees...
Yes.
The conversation continues about maybe a more aggressive program for tuitioning in students, which I think we should probably, we were gonna take it over on the Finance Committee, but frankly, I think it might be better for the entire board to talk about it. And then the Finance Committee can then talk to the selectmen about it, let them know that that's what's being considered. And I would like to see that happen, perhaps the meeting of the 15th of May, which is the first meeting we have after the budget.
Do you think it would be appropriate for the Finance Committee to come in with some information about that? What might be suggested? Would you have time to do that prior to May 15?
I mean, I don't have any information. I mean, it's just whatever the market will bear and what was suggested. And I have no reason to think that Carolyn has done some work on that. So it's up to this board to talk about a 5,500 and maybe set other tuition levels, as we should.
Can we do it a lot sooner? I think she really wants it to be for marketing as soon as possible. I mean...
Why doesn't the superintendent look at the schedule and we'll do it as soon as possible?
I mean, I am definitely...
After today, budget's gone, you know?
Well, May 2nd is our vote. Right?
Michelle?
I support talking about it as soon as possible because I don't necessarily see the two conversations as tied together. And I appreciated, actually, I don't know if it was Carolyn or Curtis who said, you know, it would be nice to have some good things to talk about. So I think...
Carolyn.
Yeah, was that Carolyn's email? Thank you.
17?
So, yeah. We got a lot on our plates. So we can't, we, well, the thing is, Carolyn presented the information to us last month. We don't feel prepared to speak about it under old business?
Not now, not tonight, please.
Okay.
Anthony?
So to that end, I had asked Bob, I think, a couple of weeks ago, to look at an analysis of the direct operating costs for each three, for all the schools. And I think that would be an important data point as we make this decision about the tuition. So when we get that, whenever we have that meeting, Bob, if we can lead that, preferably, you know, a few days before, a week preferably before the meeting to digest what the numbers say.
Finance meets May 1st. We could do it then. If that works.
Can I just ask a point of clarification?
Are you going with Dallas?
Just a point of clarification. Where does the selectmen piece fit into this? I'm just not sure. Do we decide what we wanna do and just tell them? Are you asking them for input? I'm just not sure where the selectmen piece fits in.
I think we should acquaint them with what the board has decided to do. I think, it's informational. I mean, I don't think it's asking permission. It's our, but I don't wanna just drop it on the selectmen.
I mean, you could let them know in advance that we're considering this, and if they have any input, to let the superintendent know. All right. The superintendent will look at the schedule, I'm sure, and do the best she can. Is there anything else on old business? All right, item eight, new business. Greg?
I move that we transfer up to 1% or $213,614 from the approved fiscal '16-'17 budget appropriation into the Reserve Fund for Capital and Non-Recurring Expenditures.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anything further? Any discussion?
The only thing I would address on this for the new members of the board is that we are allowed to put up to 1% of any money left over from our budget into a capital fund for non-recurring expenditures. Boards of Education are not permitted to carry a rainy day fund or extra money. And at the end of the budget year, should we have anything left over, if we, once we've put it into the Reserve Fund, that's the most we can set aside. set aside. After that, we have to basically return it to the towns. Actually, what we do is we lower next year's budget to cover it, but the idea is that we, for all intents and purposes, return anything extra to the towns. Towns are allowed to have a rainy-day fund, but they're not allowed to move expenditures around within a budget. We're allowed... We're not allowed to have a rainy-day fund, but we can move money around within the budget. So that's the way finance works, in short. So that's what this is for. We've done this just about every year, and it's really good that we do it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, thank you. Eight-two, Greg?
I move that we authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $84,500 from the elementary capital non-recurring fund. This is a special fund within the leases for the elementary schools, as detailed below, from the 2017-18 budget, as recommended by the Finance Committee, and...
Hold on, is that the motion?
Actually, let me strike that. Let me say... Let me redo the motion. "To authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $84,500 from the elementary capital non-recurring fund," as detailed below in this list.
Is there a second? Alan, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, it passes. Thank you. Did you want to give a brief explanation? Well, I'll move on. Eight-three, is there? Eight-point-three, "to consider, if appropriate, authorized chance for an amount not to exceed $337,500 from the 1% Capital Reserve Fund for capital improvements from the 2017-18 budget, as recommended by the Finance Committee on February 23, 2017, as set forth in the agenda." Greg?
I move that we authorize the transfer of an amount not to exceed $337,500 from the 1% Capital Reserve Fund for capital improvements from the 2017-18 budget, as set forth below this motion, eight-point-three on the agenda.
All right, it's been moved by Greg, seconded by Michael. All right. Yes, Anthony?
Can I offer a friendly amendment to add $23,500 for our scoreboard for the main athletic field?
You may offer a friendly amendment, yes.
Thank you.
Is it capital? Can we put it there, Bob?
It's a piece of equipment.
Well, I mean, it's intended to stay there for more than 20 years. I don't know. There's... If it meets the cri... Okay, cool.
All right, so the motion is amended. "To increase the $337,500 by $23,500 for a scoreboard," is that right?
$23,500. That includes the logo, the electrical, the everything, yep.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, is that right?
No, not solar.
Mike, Michael, you accepted that amendment? All right. Valerie?
Where is this on the facility committee priority list?
All of these things were in this year's budget. We originally intended to do all of them... Next year's budget. We intended to do all of them next year. The 10,000-gallon water tank replacement must be done. The tank is failing.
No, I'm not asking about that. I'm asking about the scoreboard.
Oh, the scoreboard? Well, the scoreboard is something that's been viewed as we ought to have it. We had a...
Well, where is it on the priority list?
We don't have a priority list.
Yes, you do.
No, we don't. We...
Why don't you? We've always done...
All right, Valerie, let him answer the question.
We don't have one. We look at things that need to be done. Don develops a list of projects that need to be done. We try not to... I mean, we try to... We've been focusing on doing work around the school to try to improve the appearance of the place, and one of the items that we've talked about is the scoreboard. We had a... For example, we had a kid that had a student that had a senior project to put a scoreboard on the soccer field. It was actually to put it on top of a building, and this turned into a big controversy, because some people said, "Well, gee, I mean, why's he got to repair the building?" Well, he didn't have to repair the building. He needed to shore it up so it would hold the scoreboard. The building wasn't designed to hold a scoreboard, but the idea is, is when it comes to things like this, we probably should do these things ourselves. We should not depend on people to do projects to put this building in proper order and to add things that we need. I mean, we flat-out don't have a scoreboard out there, and we should have a scoreboard. And so I think it's a relatively small item, and we should just add it and get it done. Personally, I would have liked to have seen these items remain in the budget, but I understand why they're out.
Were they part of the budget?
All...
The operating budget?
Everything except the scoreboard was part of the budget. The scoreboard came about late in the game because of a student who proposed the scoreboard.
And so this is no longer a senior project?
I don't think so.
I don't thi... Well, the senior project... The senior project got a little dicey when he wanted to put it on top, and as Greg said. I think he's still doing a senior project. I'm not exactly sure of the particulars. I don't think with his senior project, he'll be able to raise this kind of money. So I... You know, I think it's a feel-good project, and I support the board. Might as well get it done. It's late at night, and I think it's a good thing.
Well, that's what bothers me. It's late at night, and it's, you know, one person or a group that wanted to throw something out there, and it's a specialty thing, and I believe in process, that if it's a demonstrated need, then it's worthy of taxpayer dollars. This might indefinitely be, but it hasn't gone through a process. We might not be able to do other things because of this. So I don't like the way it was presented. I need months to think about this.
All right, just for the record, I mean, we have... I have in front of me a Chappal Valley School soccer scoreboard estimate from Don O'Leary, March 22nd. It says eight enumerated items, total $23,500. Anthony?
I was going to say, as far as a specialty item, I'm going to go out on another limb here tonight and think that we're probably one of the only high schools, especially... We're probably one of the only high schools in Connecticut that doesn't have a scoreboard on its main athletic field. Just... If we... If there's somebody else that's like single digits, I can't believe that...
All right, Michelle?
Well, I just wanted to say, too, that it's been talked about for years. It rises to the top, and then it falls back down as something else rises to the top because something broke. I mean, it's not a safety issue, so... But it's not out of the blue. It's been talked about. Exactly. Just never made it to the altar.
Well, one of the things we've been trying to do is we've been trying to upgrade the athletic facilities a little bit. That's been part of our... Part of our plan, if you will, on our... I don't know if you call it... We don't call it a priorities list. It's been something we've been trying to do. We've been making some changes in the locker rooms. We have redone the floor in the gymnasium and put the new logo there. We eliminated a tripping hazard in the floor that's existed for probably something close to 35 years, and actually, make that 40 years. And so, this is a natural progress, is to have a scoreboard out at our principal athletic field and just, you know, try to make... Trying to get facilities up to a little bit better level.
All right, so the amended motion is to transfer an amount not to exceed $361,000 for the items set forth on the agenda, in addition to the Chappal Valley School soccer scoreboard for $23,500. Michelle?
I just wanted to let everyone know that with the $213 that we put in, minus everything that is on the table now, it leaves roughly a balance of $466,000 in the 1% for future use, which is definitely higher than it's been in many years past, so I'm comfortable with that amount. So, thank you, Bob, for...
All right, is there anything further? Thank you, Michelle.
Well, yes, here we are, all concerned about taking $25,700 out of the operating budget and putting it against this fund for some really worthy capital expenditures, i.e. the Keylock system, because we don't want to bleed it dry. And then, last minute, at 11 o'clock at night, this is thrown into the mix. I... I mean, it's not even on the agenda to discuss. It's a last-minute throw-by. I mean, procedurally, can we just throw anything out here? It's not on the agenda. It's not known to the public. I don't... It could be or maybe not a senior project. It might be very, very worthy, but, you know, we shouldn't be in this pork barrel kind of business.
It was suggested by me at the last board meeting and responded to by the superintendent today in an email to all of us, and her recommendation was not to put it into the budget. So, I refrained from passing a motion and forcing it into the budget, if you will, and thought I'd ask the board if they were interested in funding it out of the 1%, because of the interest that was shown. And that's the long and the short of it.
All right, anything else?
I mean, it's worthy, but, you know, let's go through some process here, and frankly, we have had no input from the community. I don't know. Maybe we should do it with solar panels? I'm not sure. I mean, it's just suddenly thrown in here last minute. I do not like this process. I think we could get in trouble for this. If I had a pet project, you know, maybe I'd throw it in there last minute, too. That's not what we're supposed to do here. That's called pork barrel.
All right, anything else? Jen?
I just want to say, I'm totally... I support Anthony doing this. I'm thrilled. It's long overdue. We have a lot of Chappal pride. We have a lot of people that come to see our games, and we don't even have a scoreboard. It's embarrassing. We started to have homecomings. We have this amazing evening, and we don't even have a scoreboard? To me, this is long overdue. I'm thrilled, and I'm... I can't wait to see it if it comes.
Peter?
Yes!
Is there a need to move the question? Is there anyone else?
No, one more comment is that, you know, if it's worthy, it should have been part of process, that's all. I'm not saying do it next year. Just give us some time to even think of it as an agenda item.
All right, anything further? All right, then the motion is to transfer an amount not to exceed $361,000 from the 1% Capital Reserve Fund for capital improvements, as set forth in the agenda, the items, plus $23,500 for a Chappal Valley soccer scoreboard. All those in favor, say aye. Let's do it another way. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, raise your hand. All right, the motion passes. There's no action items. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two minutes after 11. Thank you all for your patience.